Wake up, people. Ken and Steve. Any discussion of the scene, none? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jay or Tammy, whoever's up next, let's take off because this is an exciting day. And I need to encourage everybody. We have, several of us have, we don't normally meet as late as we do today. And several, well, actually, three of us made plane reservations to represent the state other places. So we really need to stay on schedule. And we don't normally do that, yesterday being an example.
Well, okay, so we have prepared. Welcome back, by the way. We do have a bit of a timer up here, just to help schools remember to stay on pace and then to also provide ample time for you to ask questions of their plans. That being said, you know, this one is a polite timer. It's not going to go off like the oven, like the turkey's done.
That's my job.
So we'll hear from Liberal and Stockton. We ask that you hold your questions until after both schools have presented. But feel free to jot down those questions for the elementaries, too. Don't forget about them. And then after each school, we'll have a quick photo op and get people on their way and then hear from the next school. Thank you for your time today. First up is Meadowlark Elementary School from Liberal.
I'm Shawna Evans. I'm the principal at Meadowlark Elementary. Let me introduce my staff that I brought with me today. I have Jess Graham. She's our fifth grade teacher. Dina Fuller, instructional coach, and she is transferring to ESL this next year. Mo Mulligan, kindergarten teacher. Jennifer Hyde, she was our interventionist and she's going to instructional coach this next year. She also served as our co-pilot. And then we have Lynn Day, and she is our instructional coach, and she was our pilot for this big endeavor. So we just want to thank you, first of all, for allowing us to do this. Quick overview, just a, we were a brand-new building this year, Meadowlark Elementary. We opened this last August. And so we had, we went from K3 to K5. We reshuffled our district. And so we did not know our kids. We didn't know our families. They didn't know us. And so why not just go big or go home? And so we chose to do this redesign because we knew our students needed it. We just know what our population is in Liberal. At Meadowlark, we have 98% of our students are low SES, 76% ELL students. That includes not only Spanish, but a variety of Guatemalan dialects, Ethiopians, German, Vayotian. So we are very diverse at Meadowlark. Many of our parents, they are illegal. They are illiterate. They are migrant families. They do work, shift work. And so our main employer is our beefpacking plant. Many of our kids do not have the background experiences that many other students do. And so with that, that was our why. I'm going to turn this over to a few of our students here. A few, you can see our kiddos. Turn this over to Lynn Day. Share our vision.
So when we started to establish our vision, one of the first things that we did, we pulled in our staff and we took Dr. Watson's information about what a successful graduate from high school for Kansas should look like. And we brought that down to our level. So we asked our staff, what is, would a fifth grader leaving our school need to know? What skills would they need to have? And we brainstormed all the things that we needed for that. We felt like we needed as a staff. And we came up with pages and pages of things. And most of them were not academic things. They were the soft skills and the social-emotional skills. From that list, we sort of categorized them and came up with our vision. But we also took a needs assessment with our parents and with the students also to help confirm that our vision was that Meadowlark students can reach their dreams. This is our why. And we have been using that as a reference point throughout the year for everything that we were considering, did it really hit that vision? And so this really was a guiding point. There were a lot of times that we were looking at something in particular and we looked back at the vision and we went, no, that doesn't hit our vision. So it really was a really good guiding point for us. So on the way to getting the Meadowlark students to reach their dreams, we are going to hear from our teachers and the rest of the group on what we're using for next year.
So one of our biggest goals was to increase family engagement at Meadowlark. And some of the ways that we are planning to do that in the coming years is to implement, oh, sorry, to implement Little Tykes Reading Time, which is a time for us to invite some of our siblings in who are not of school age yet. So some of the preschool kids who might not be attending preschool, they're going to come with an adult and get some literacy skills so we can kind of bridge that gap for kindergarten readiness. Some other things you might see are parent cafes. And parent cafes are invitation-only focus groups for the families at Meadowlark. So we might cover topics like how to increase literacy at home or how to help their students with different academic skills. But we might also address things like what to do if a family member is deported or if you're a single mom living in Liberal, how do you support your kids? And then finally, we want to provide transportation for our families and for our parents, not only to school events like parent conferences or family nights that we might host at Meadowlark, but also throughout our community. We found that a lot of our parents don't have transportation for their kids. And so even if there's an event in town that is free and they would be able to go to, they can't physically get there. So we want to try and provide some of those experiences within our community for them.
Now, I will talk about personalized learning at our school. If you came to visit us during the day, you probably wouldn't see the traditional whole group, all the students sitting in rows at their desks and the teacher at the front of the classroom. You would probably see lots of different things happening in the classroom. To go back to our vision, we wanted the students to be able to reach their dreams. And so through our research last year, or this last year, we found that personalized learning was the best thing that we could do for our students, to meet them where they were at and push them and fill those gaps that they had. If you walked into a classroom, you would probably see students working on some type of technology. There would probably be a teacher table going. There might even be students working on a STEM activity or even working by themselves. Some of the things that we found through our research is that there are many programs that are adaptive programs. And one of them is iStation reading. And we're going to be using that this year. And it provides real-time data for teachers to be able to make those instructional decisions just like that. And so we found that those adaptive programs were the best use of the technology and the time that we had to be able to make instructional decisions for kids every single day. During the personalized learning, the students, they are able to set their own goals. You can see in the picture that the little gal here has a goal sheet and she marks off what she does every day. The students set goals for themselves. They keep track of what their learning is. And we hope to foster responsibility through that. Another big thing that we are going to be doing is project-based learning. And we have already started learning about that this summer. And so that's one of our big things that we hope that will help us get to personalized learning for each one of our students. And now Ms. Dina will talk about our nurturing community and experiences.
Well, like Mrs. Evans was talking about, our students, and they have various backgrounds and they're low SES. And so with that comes a lack of experiences. Thank you. And so one of our goals is to provide them with experiences, not only within our school, but without our school. And we would like to build partnerships and relationships with the local businesses and community structures in Liberal. Some of the things that we want to implement is some partnerships with our college, Sierra County Community College, and the Adult Learning Center. And what they, some of the things that they could provide for our kiddos is opportunities like learning to swim. So not just that. And then also, we want to tap into the Calvin Center so that they can help our parents learn English and be better connected with the school. And so they want to work with us closely to help us with parent-teacher conferences and other parent information. Also, one of the things that we have already implemented to address social-emotional learning is school families. And with school families, school families help build relationships between staff and students. It helps develop the children's social skills. And so we're really excited about the gains that we have made involving staff and students. And so because of nurturing community and experiences, Jess Graham is going to talk to us about our Mighty Monday.
So like everyone has said, we know that our kids are lacking in experiences primarily because they come from a background of generational poverty. So they don't really leave their neighborhood. So we have to bring opportunities to them to get to try things. So Mighty Monday stands for Meadowlark's innovative time excites everyone. And we chose Monday strategically because it is our worst attendance day. So we're trying to entice the kids to come on Monday. But every Monday, we'll start with school families. And then every wing, so we'll have a K1, a 2, 3, and a 4, 5, we'll get a two-hour block of time where the teachers from that wing, plus music teachers and PE teachers will, it'll kind of run like a kid's college type of thing. We'll get to choose what kind of class we want to offer to the kids that's based on, you know, staff interests and strengths. And then the students get to sign up for which class they want to attend for the quarter or for the semester, depending on the grade level. Some of the things that we already know are going to be offered, our music teacher in the 4, 5 block is going to do a choir and a mallet ensemble. There's going to be coding in, I think every wing is going to do coding. We're going to do some journalism, yearbook, school newspapers, art appreciation, just lots of different things that you don't normally get to do in a regular school day. So we're going to give our kids those opportunities. We also are looking at doing some bike safety. And we've got a contact with RC&amp;D to get bikes for our kids because our kids can't afford that kind of a thing. And we're just really looking forward to that and having it be where the kids get to choose what they want to do and what interests them and to help give them those experiences that they normally wouldn't get. And now we're going to turn it over to the high school.
I'm Ashley Kapelman. I'm the principal at Liberal High School. And I'd like to reiterate a thank you for this opportunity to do this project. It has been absolutely amazing and an honor to be able to really rethink everything that we're doing. To introduce the team with us today, there are members of our core team. We have Melissa Westerman, who's a chemistry teacher. She's been at Liberal High School for several years. Eli Swati, who is our pilot, he's our English department, or English teacher and English department chair. And then Carter Krueger, who is a math teacher and our girls' head basketball coach. Not with us today, we have one other core team member, Eric Olmstead, who's a social studies teacher. And actually, will be transitioning into the role of a student engagement coordinator next year, a position that we will have for the first time next year. Just to begin, we reflected a lot on the year. And throughout the year, there were several times that we found ourselves very thankful that we were in the midst of a project of changing the way that we were doing things. Because while we feel like we were already doing a lot for our students and doing the very best that we could, we could do better. And so graduation was another time that really hit me personally, as I shook hands, you know, it's this large 5A high school. I shook hands of students that, many of them, I don't know that that was the first time that I shook their hand before. And I wondered, if I don't know them, can I ensure that someone, an adult in this building, knows them and has checked on them and knows what their plan tomorrow is? And for the, you know, when the school year starts next year, or just their life? And so, again, found myself thankful that we're doing something about knowing each student, not all students. It's easy to say all students because you can really give yourself an average and feel good about yourself. But when you look at each student, that makes a difference. And then to really further look into that is, do we know every story? Do we know that every student in our high school left having a story? They didn't just have this diploma that signified their completion of our time at USC 480, but they had a story and they had somebody that really cared about them and that was part of that story. And that they have an outline for a story that will continue. And we gave them skills so that they can live that out. And so that's why we're really proud to present our vision and our plan is titled "The Angry Red Advantage." And the teachers are going to take it from here to explain more about it. But we are, again, very honored to be here today and we really appreciate this opportunity.
Angry Red, enough said. That's a traditional chant that we believe embodies who we are and the fighting spirit that we have. The Angry Red Advantage is our hope and our intent that every student that graduates from Liberal High School will have the confidence and the competence to, regardless of where their passion takes them, whether it's an immediate career or whether it is college attendance, that they will have what they need to accomplish those goals. The Angry Red Advantage has three parts, is a plan for today, a vision for tomorrow, and a purpose for life. The plan is built on, excuse me, the plan is built on that we will identify their strengths and that will serve to use their interests to build the IPS. And the IPS is a living document. So if they get more career information, which we are hoping, and if they have, life happens to them and they have to change things, that that will change also. And so that will grow with them as they continue through Liberal High School. The vision for tomorrow is that we will create a culture of growth, grit, and hope. And that we will be there to back them up as they develop those skills. The purpose for life is that they will have, that built into them to carry that after graduation, that they will invest in their communities. Our goals are an increase in attendance, that every student will come to school and they will have classes that are important to them, that are serving their interests, and that there will be teachers there that will mentor them and give them the caring that they need. And so that somebody is always there, learning their story and that they don't feel like they were ignored at school. The problem solving has two pieces that we want, we know our kids need an increase in their problem-solving abilities. And the first part of that is that we are going to be implementing a FlexMod schedule. That in itself is going to be a problem solving because that schedule has a start bell and an end bell. That's a new thing for our students. It's a new thing for our teachers. We test drove that. On May 7th, we had a week of no bells except for a start bell and an end bell. And I know as a teacher and listening to my colleagues, we're a bit nervous about that. And what we found is, you know what? We don't need bells. I personally appointed a timekeeper in my class and they had lots of backup because kids were worried about getting out on time. And that was, it was amazing. And when it was time, we finished up and they moved on to the next class. And it was, wow, how did that happen? I asked one young lady what she thought about the bells and she said, you know, I never realized how stressful bells are, how it initiated my adrenaline. And she said, now I go peacefully from class to class. And wow. We had some little teaching moments that came with that, too. Because one day, I gave a test that kind of went to the end of the hour and some of them stayed a minute after to get that finished up. And we had kids coming and kind of just wanting to come in class. And you had to stop them and say, this was an etiquette thing. Something's going on, you're going to have to wait for that invitation to class. So those old teachable moments have already happened. Other parts of problem solving, all the parts of problem solving is, the second part of the implementation is we have a problem-solving rubric that we're going to get some outside help to validate. But next year, we will be teaching our students this rubric and then we'll be implementing that problem-solving rubric the next year. Increases in student engagement. Engagement having two parts, an investment in their learning and an investment in their school and local communities. We seek 100% participation with our extracurricular activities. We are going to look at external measures with that with voter turnout, with our civic engagement program.
First of all, I don't know if it's the English teacher in me or what, but there's an adorable irony going on in these two days in that you've asked us to redesign public education and yet we're asking you to just sit and get for two days, sitting at the desks. And so I think that's very funny as an English teacher. Second of all, I have to say, my big brother's outside in the hallway. And I don't know if any of you are the youngest in the family, but I was. And I got drugged to a lot of events with my older siblings. And my older brother Josh is outside and that's pretty exciting for me. So thank you, Josh, for showing up for that. He's right there. You can come on in. So the picture that you can see up there right now is actually a video clip. And if you've never seen it, you should. Jay Scott told us about this video clip. This happens to be a Mercury Redstone rocket, one of the first ones. And if you've ever watched this YouTube video, it is inspiring and not in the way you'd want it to be. You asked us to be a Mercury 7 school and he showed us this clip and it has this beautiful pump of smoke and flames. The rocket just sits there and about 10 seconds later, the parachute goes pop and falls over to the side. And so we've been driven by this all year. We are competitive district and we want to be successful. And it's not so much for the accolades and for the pump and for the circumstances, for the sheer fact that we don't want to fail. We don't want to fail for our students. We don't want to fail for our parents. We don't want to fail for you. And so we've been driven by this competitiveness all year because we want to make sure that when we launch this in August, it's ready and it's exciting. And other schools and other states look at Kansas and say, okay, if they can do that, we can do something similar and we can really pave the way like the mission wants us to. We want to be something like this, something that's just beautiful and triumphant and glorious in all of its exposure. And so we know that we might not be there in August, but we're going to keep working at it so that every year we get better for that. In terms of some of the specifics, how we're shooting for the moon, how we're totally changing the way we do education in Liberal, the first one is this schedule, this FlexMod schedule. We now have 1,400 different schedules for 1,400 different students. We understand that in a typical classroom of 25 kids, some of them will get the content in the first 20 minutes and be bored the rest. Some of them will not get the content in the next 30 minutes and still need more time. So a FlexMod schedule allows us to be flexible with that. Students can be in class for shorter periods of time when they need to and longer periods of time when they don't need it. In other aspects, we have different styles of learning. We'll have large group instruction, similar to a college-style lecture. We'll have labs where students can be more of a one teacher to about 20 students. We have small group instruction, but then we have what's called personalized learning time. And I'll talk about that more in a minute. The FlexMod schedule, though, is going to change how we do education. There is no more an eight-hour school day where you're in every classroom the exact same amount of time. This is not something new. The schools we visited have been doing this, a few of them, since the late 1960s. So this is not just this brand-new, out-on-a-whim kind of a deal. But we have looked at what we want to do at Liberal High School and we looked at the schedule and this FlexMod seems to be what will work best for us. Second, we're looking at facilities. As you know, this is not a big budget expense. We don't have a lot of money to spend on this. And so we had to look at what we currently have. Our construction needs for the summer include one wall being torn down. If we can get that one wall done, which is still kind of up in the air, we can make this FlexMod happen and we can make the school year happen the way we want it to. And so it's about looking at what we have and restructuring it in a way that says we can make this work for our school and for our students. Course offerings. And I'll speak for the English department. We don't have English 1, 2, 3, and 4 anymore. What junior gets excited about saying, well, I'm a junior, so I get to take English 3? Nobody can get passionate about that. So we scrapped what we had for course offerings and looked at that again. So in English, for example, we have all semester-based courses now. We had 330 students sign up for mythology this year. We had another 192 sign up for sports literature and film as literature and conversational literacy. We have a firefighter 1 and 2 class now so students can graduate with their fire science degree and get a job as a firefighter. That is only happening in one other school in the state of Kansas. So being able to offer them courses that are interesting, because I was called out once about teaching Huck Finn and I got really defensive. And then I realized, okay, can I justify the fact that 400 kids need to read Huck Finn? And as much as I'd like to fight for that, I can't do that. There are other things that they need to learn to be prepared for the jobs and the experiences that they want in life. It's also about time. As a parent, I know how much of my kid's day is spent in school. And for so many kids, that is so much of their life. And if we are not maximizing that time that we have with them, then we are doing them a disservice. Because for so many of our kids, they walk out of that school at 3:35. By 4 o'clock, they've changed, they've clocked into a job, and they're there until midnight or later. And so if we can't be better stewards of their time in the eight hours, seven and a half hours that we have them each day, then we're failing them. And the problem is that with an eight-hour school day, they had that one moment where they could interact with a teacher, where they could get help on that. And if they missed that moment, that was it. Because after school, they either had work or they had sports, or the teacher had work or the teacher had kids. And so what the FlexMod is going to give us is that time during the day when a student can go back to that teacher and say, I didn't get it, I need help. Or, I got it, I need enrichment, give me something more beyond that. Finally, it's about leadership. If you, I don't know who that guy is in that picture, but he looks pretty cool. In terms of our high school this year, to give you kind of a shock factor, we have four principals there at the high school. Combined experience in administration at the high school this year, our head principal, this was her first year as the head principal. Our assistant principals had four years of experience at the assistant principal at the high school level this year. One had two years, one was first-year assistant principal, the other one was first-year assistant principals. They had administrative experience in other schools, some of them, but that shows that we can do this. We can empower those administrators and we can empower teachers to have different leadership roles than they have had before and make that a success. And so that was an exciting moment as a teacher, but also to see school-wide where students and teachers were stepping up in those leadership roles.
So as we led by example, what lessons do we want our students to learn through this process and through our redesign as a whole? First is to leverage our strengths. Our students saw our entire staff work together on over 20 different research committees, exploring all things from lunch to the schedule itself. And here you can see a picture of several students at our ribbon-cutting ceremony for our school store. In this picture, we've got students of all different strengths. We've got big dreamers. We've also got the grounded and very practical analytical folks. And then we've got students that help smooth it over and make the whole team work. And they've learned that through this process. We want to challenge the status quo. There was no sacred cow in our building, no initiative, no program that was off limits to being examined. Is that best for our students? Here you can actually see a picture of students coming in on, when we had a PD day, they didn't even have school. They came into a voluntary discipline meeting where we examined our entire discipline model and they were able to provide very valuable feedback for that. So we looked at everything. We want to advocate for change. Here you can see a picture of students in a focus group where they're able to make their voices heard. And we want them to be comfortable doing that. We want them to stand up for others and advocate for what's right. We're working to ignite passions and not just help students with their academic passions, but help them find what they really are passionate about. We want to give them an opportunity to do that every day and go out and really be excited about coming to school and what their future can hold. We want to contribute. We feel like our students, as mentioned before, we want, our aim is for 100% involvement with extracurriculars. And we feel like if they can contribute to their school community, it will build that foundation to contributing to their overall community when they graduate, when they leave. We want them to have that intrinsic motivation to do that. And lastly, we, it's not a word we talk about a lot, but love. We want to build that love for each other, love for what they're doing in their school day. And we want them to go out, to learn to go out of their way to show that to each other and show that support. And so that's really what we're aiming for through this redesign. At that point, if there's any questions for either school, happy to take them.
Tammy, did you say we're going to wait till after the next presentation before we ask questions or do it now?
Questions now would be great for Liberal.
Okay, questions.
And the FlexMod schedule, what training are you providing the teachers to manage the time? Because the teachers have to make the schedule work, not the clock.
You'll need to step up to the mic to answer questions.
Part of it was that we, a core of us visited four schools in the fall to look at what this was like. We made connections with other teachers there so we could ask directly, how do you do this in an English classroom? As soon as we returned from that, we sent 22 more teachers and staff members to Omaha, Nebraska, to another FlexMod school up there so that they could see it in action. And then we piloted some of that this spring. In English, we piloted large group instruction so we could get an under... so we could get an understanding of how do you co-teach? If you've got 75 kids in the room and three teachers, how do you differentiate roles? And what works with 75 kids and what doesn't work with 75 kids? And so we were able to kind of test the waters this spring. But you're right, we still have a lot of training to do to get our minds wrapped around different times, different days of the week.
The student engagement person, your hire, maybe here?
No, he's not.
And what role is that person going to take? What are their duties going to be?
He's not with us today. He will, we originally were looking at the position two years ago as sort of a dean of students. But as we did this project, and we called it student engagement coordinator, but we morphed what it would look like. We want him to be kind of the stopgap when students are having trouble in class to recognize if it's an engagement problem or it's really a discipline problem. Because if it's an engagement problem and there's barriers in their way, why not take care of those instead of giving kids consequences? Let's work it out. We want him to coach, help coach teachers also with management of behavior. And we're using, by the way, the term behavior a lot more often than you'll hear discipline because we're trying to train the students to do and be better. And then the positive side's a lot more student recognition and a lot more even teacher recognition on that end.
And what have you done with the community to gauge them in this planning process?
So, and I'll, actually, I'm going to turn that over to Metalark, and then we can get to follow up.
We have had, we did have a meeting with the business leaders and had a breakfast and presented our ideas at the beginning of the year. We've had meetings off and on with different organizations. Like with Metalark, we've met with Seward County Community College and the Culbin Adult Learning Center. And they've come to share their excitement and ideas that they feel like they can offer as resources to us.
We've had vision walks at Liberal High School, and so we've had these posters put up around the building that include Flex Mod schedule and lunch and sort of the ideas out there. And then we'll have groups of students and groups of community members, community college deans and professors. And then we'll just walk the halls and talk about the changes that are going to take place, both physically and, I guess you would say emotionally, academically for the students. And so the goal is by the end, we'll have those on podcasts. So if somebody comes to a basketball game, they can walk the building and experience the vision walk as well. But as you know, time goes quickly, and we haven't had a chance to get those done yet.
Another thing that Metalark did, real quick, we had a Twisted Tuesday that was a two-hour block of time where community members came in and offered to offer special courses to our kids. And it allowed for the staff to have research time. So we had, like, the Parkinson Rec Department come in. Let's see, who else?
City and county governments.
Yeah, city and county governments came in. Case state extension office has been in. So that offered a lot of connections with the community also.
Thank you.
Is your, oh, you have a question or the motion?
I have a question and a motion.
Okay. Do the question. Okay, Anne?
Thank you. In a large high school like that, how do you help the kids get those individual plans done? Are they in small groups attached to a teacher? Do the counselors do it, or how does that happen?
We'll start and end every day with a homeroom. And so you'll begin the day, and you'll kind of map it out and plan it out. But we're going to do this, we have two goals for that. One is to have that social-emotional mentorship with the teacher and the students. So it'll be a small group, one teacher to every 10 or 15 students. The other thing we're doing is we're pairing teachers for that. So there'll actually be two groups of students. And the goal is that some of those teachers who naturally build relational capacity with those students will be able to mentor those other teachers who struggle with that so that every kid then has an opportunity to experience that deeper emotional connection.
So are the kids in a group the same grade, if you will?
What we'll have is we'll have pairs of ninth-grade students with 11th grade, and then 10th with 12th grade. And then they'll stay together for the few years that they have.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, the following schedule, Steve, Kathy, and then Sally. And then that will be the end of the question, and we'll have to move forward after that, this damn schedule.
I just have an observation. We've heard three presentations now from three districts, and I think yours is the most dynamic to this point. We have four more coming. But I just want to compliment you on the hard work that you've done. Thank you.
Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I love your plan for today, vision tomorrow, and purpose for life. That really resonates. My question for the high school was about the individual plans of study. So it sounds like you kind of talked about that. But I might also ask, how are you incorporating career technical education into that plan of study?
Excellent question, and something that we have not mentioned yet, but I'm glad we have the opportunity to, is we have a strong working relationship with Seward County Community College. We have a lot of seat, we have, I believe, we're now to 15 pathways next year. And so looking a lot with just even expanding that and making sure that students get into those pathways. But Seward County has a huge point of leverage for us to be able to do more and more with our students. At the beginning, you see a picture of a young lady who is in the national, natural gas compression program, one of the few females, has an internship at One Oak this summer. Pays more than most of our classified staff are paid. They've made comments several times. But yes, I think that's going to only increase it. We've been pretty strong CTE-wise already, but I think it's only going to increase it.
And then the elementary school. Talk a little bit about your school families. I've heard that concept, but so kind of how are you doing those?
That's her specialty.
Okay, all right.
Well, it's one of my favorites personally, and we started in January. And what we have is every staff member, including paraprofessionals, have a group of students, no more than six to seven per staff member. And so what we do is we get together every Monday. I think it's like about 50 minutes. And that way, we can build relationships and connections, you know, with the students and staff. Because we have like 400 students. And as a teacher, it's impossible to get to know all of those kids. When you work in the lunchroom, it's impossible to get to know them. And so this way, we can build appropriate social and emotional behaviors with those children through experiences and lessons and team-building activities. And so the effect that have, that has is that as a school, we become closer together, and there's a real bonding experience. And the kids become more engaged with school, which seems to, you know, get them ready for what's going to happen at the high school. Also, the kids become more connected with our vision and goals. So they, you know, feel like they have a stake at school too, not just that they're there to get stuff put into them. They really feel like that they're involved. And also, I think the kids are going to develop social skills and understanding even at the youngest age of kindergarten. And they will contribute to their school and to their community.
Thank you.
How many elementary schools are in the Liberal School District? And you may or may not know the answer to this question, but are there plans to replicate the redesign in the other buildings?
There is. This next year, the rest of our district is going to be jumping on board. I know that Tammy and Jay have already been talking to them. But yes, there is a plan for them to develop their own plan, not just to follow ours.
Thank you. Sally, it's all yours.
I might remind the board that this was the district that passed that huge bond issue, three to one. And so they have a community that's very much behind education. And so they went from seven elementary schools to five. And so what I'd like to know is, through this experience, has anything, rules, regulations, things that are going on that we need to be aware of, that might need to be changed down the road to help you to be successful?
The answer is yes.
Would you like to share what that might be, so we know?
We actually, we're getting very used to this drive to Topeka. We had a drive up a few weeks ago and met with CTE and met with KESHA and met with some of those issues. We ran into, we ran into, I wouldn't say challenges or roadblocks, but just a few hiccups in terms of seat time and contact time and counts and how that works. And even then, in terms of KESHA, I mean, the start time and end times of school practices and things like that. Also, in terms of the language arts department and our new course offerings, we've had to spend some very extensive discussions with Kabor and KC-CMS. And I've learned more than I ever wanted to know about course coding and how that all works. And so there is, I think, I'm not going to suggest, but I think there is an element of a redesign that needs to be holistic, that maybe is not holistic yet. And so I think that would be, that would be even more supportive of what, of the efforts that we're doing so far.
By the way, it's okay to suggest here.
Well, then you have my suggestion on record.
You know, Eli, it might be kind of helpful if that was in writing of some kind so that we can have it to work on.
I know an English teacher. I'll put them on.
Okay, okay. Did you have anything?
It's something, it really, we've been working with Kevin Davis because as we look at personalized learning, we're also looking at IAP minutes and trying to determine the difference between pullouts, push-in, how to write those. So as we work through that this year, we are working with Kevin Davis on that, but it's just still very gray of what that should look like. Another roadblock, roadblock challenge that we had that I believe is still, is already being looked at is the recess attached to lunch. The auditor does not recognize that those are contact minutes. We have to have a break between our recess and our lunch. They cannot be attached. And so that has been something that they have looked at, and they are, I think, looking at changing that. But it sounds minor, but...
Write it down. Write it down and let us get it.
I'll talk to this English teacher, see if he can put that in writing for me.
Well, thank you very much. As your representative, you've made me proud once again, as you all know you do. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept the redesign plans of Liberal USD 480 for the Metalark Elementary and Liberal High School as presented for the Mercury 7 project and to be implemented by the 2018-19 school year.
Is there a second to Sally's motion? A bunch of them. We'll call it Kathy. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. At this point, we're going to have a photo ops. And so we have certificates and banners to present to you, and we'll do it by building. So if the people from Metalark can meet me right here with the commissioner and Tammy.
K-12?
Yeah, that worked pretty well.
Yeah, worked good.
Yeah, well, we're on a time crisis today.
Next up, we have Stockton. And they are redesigning their entire school, K-12. So it will be one combined presentation, and then a time for questions.
Thank you.
Good morning. We bring you greetings from Stockton, from USD 271, the Deke Slaton Project. As Tammy shared with you at the beginning, we are a district-wide redesign. So our team is not so much a building leadership team, but a district leadership team. And I have the privilege this morning of introducing the team to you. I'm Stacy Green. I'm the elementary principal. And to my left here is Jenny Niblock. She is our facts, science, family and consumer science teacher at the high school. Andrea Graham, kindergarten. Lee Lindsey is one of those rare finds. He is a math and English language arts secondary instructor. Andrea Dix is our fourth and fifth grade science and math instructor. And Shelley Swain, our secondary principal and superintendent. And again, we thank you for this time to come and share and be prepared to be amazed.
All right. Well, thank you again so much. We have absolutely loved this process. I think you've heard over and over, it's been very exciting to be a part of. It's the most motivating thing I've ever been a part of, as well as the most challenging. But that comes with a lot of rewards. So we are tiger-ready became our vision of, it can be something that students every day need to be ready. We need to be ready to put our best forth, but also they need to be ready to go out into the world and do absolutely anything. And my moment of what that really meant came in March. And my family went to a documentary called Dream Big. My daughter has always loved bridges. She's five. And we watched this college student decide to not, you know, stay in Stockton or to stay in Kansas or even to stay in the United States. But she was traveling all over the world to third-world countries, helping these communities that people were dying trying to get to medical care or to school because they were trying to cross these flooded waterways. And she was helping them build bridges. And that was my moment of, my kids are going to end up anywhere. Our kids, all over the state, all over Stockton, they're going to end up anywhere, and we want them to be ready. So our tiger part stands for the touchstones. We want them innovative. We want them to have grit. We want them to be empowered, and we want them to be great at all sorts of relationships. We know that they are not only going to need to be coworkers, but they're going to be family members and friends. And they're going to need to be able to do that across all parts of their life. So that became our vision as we started into our plan. So the next part, we'll share our three goals with you and what that looks like in practice. Which button are we talking? Perfect, thanks.
Our first goal was our social-emotional goal. And basically, we stole it from our state standards. We decided that the goal that the state had put out for social-emotional was exactly what we wanted. We want those students to learn, to practice, and model essential personal life habits that contribute to academic vocational and personal success. Students will learn to be caring and civil, to make healthy decisions, to problem-solve effectively, to value excellence, to be respectful and responsible, to be good citizens, and to be empathetic and ethically, ethical individuals. We didn't think that we could say it any better than that. And so we took that right out of our standards from the state. In the high school, our one, the main component that we're putting in was communities. We developed communities, K-12. In the high school, we're going to start first thing in the morning and at the end of the day, where we meet with the same small group of kids. Each teacher will have somewhere between eight and 10 students that they will start to develop those relationships with. We feel that relationships are one of the most important concepts for social-emotional. Teaching students how to treat other people is one of our main goals. In the high school, we looked at trauma response and what it means and self-regulation. And that's one of the components that we're putting in for social-emotional.
Absolutely. Our grade school community groups are based off of Dr. Becky Bailey's family structure. So kind of what you just heard Liberal talk about, except our community members did not want us to be calling them family. So we've had a lot of, we know what we want to do. We know what the research says. And we've had to be flexible to meet the needs and the expectations of our community. So these are our community groups. We met every Friday for about half an hour. We worked on team-building. We worked on celebrating things together, talked about challenges and how to work through those challenges. And the pictures you see up here are from a variety of things. They might be from the lessons that the kids were part of as we explored our tiger touchstones together, which are respect, responsibility, confidence. But also from our grade school music program. respect, responsibility, confidence, but also from our grade school music program. Our music teachers took on a redesigned program, and it involved music and rhythm and dancing. And rather than perform with your classmates, they were performing with their community group, which was a wonderful experience. We've seen kids that didn't want to participate in the past, but because it was part of their community, they would do it for that individual. We were not very far into the semester when they started asking, why don't we do this every day? And so as part of our implementation in the fall, we will start each day with our community groups and build that time in for our kids. We have what, at the beginning, what's called first 10 of our day, which is a soft start where kids really get to come in and have a quiet transition to their day, and then they'll go straight into that community group. So the first 45 to 50 minutes of their school day will be non-stressful, safe, before they ever have to academically engage. Here are a few more pictures from our community groups. It really became our favorite time of the week, so we're excited to do it every day. And as Lee stated earlier, we have made it our goal to become trauma responsive, to really change everything about how we're interacting with students, how we take care of their social emotional needs, and acknowledge the trauma as well as the poverty in our district, and help to meet them right where they are. One of the things that we talked about with our grade school staff is if we do nothing else in our redesign, what's the one thing we absolutely have to do? And it was to make time for relationships, because if we don't do that, not only through our community groups, but through all of our class periods, nothing else really matters. Okay, and here are some of our trauma responsive pictures as we implement. Our first strategy was zones of regulation, and students just really looking at how am I feeling? What has made me feel that way? And what is a strategy or a tool that I could use to move out of that zone? And our high school kids especially gave us some really wonderful feedback on how that helped them to transition into their day, and that they felt like they would use that going on into a career or to their life.
So Goal Two is, as you can see, thinkers, learners, and doers was the name of our action team. Real creative there. I was in charge of it, so. The students in this goal, they're going to take ownership of their learning. They're going to develop those deep personal connections with each other, their teachers and other adults while doing so. The personalized learning part of it is going to accelerate their loot, their learning, but tailoring it to that instructional environment of what they need, when they need it, how they need it, and where they need it to address their individual needs and interests. And so through that, we've looked at some, we're going to be doing collaboration, putting more collaboration time into our school day with project-based learning and with our communities as well, with the high school, I don't know on the collaboration. So, so like all my, my fifth graders, sorry, they collaborated with the kindergarteners on the garden project. This past year, we, we piloted that, and the seventh graders helped with that. And so we're looking at putting multi-grade level students together to be more collaborative and also learn those social skills that go along with collaboration, those soft skills that they need to go out into the world with. So the project-based learning, here are some pictures of some of the project-based learning that we've piloted last year. Now that we have gone to training, we know what we need to do better and step it up, but putting our standards into projects, multidisciplinary standards. My fifth graders did a duck boat challenge where they had to research and look at designs of boats and what the different designs were for. And then they had to test their boats, as you can see them testing their boats, how much weight they would hold, how fast they could get them to go with the puff of a straw, or how far they could go. Some of the pictures are with the kindergartner's garden that they had support from many grade levels on kindergarten, seventh grade, fifth grade. It was a story garden. And so my seventh grade class we took out and to our community, using our community experts, to the florist when we were talking about sexual and asexual reproduction of plants. And so she's the expert in that. So teach my students. What is a plant look like that reproduces sexually? What does a plant look like that reproduces asexually? You be the expert, because you're the expert at that. And so using our community to help us with that. Blended learning, you're more the expert there.
Under blended learning, we talked about, a lot of people look at that and they think, oh, it's technology. And we're really not looking to use it with technology. We want to minimize the use of technology. There's some research out there that, you know, is unclear on what the effects of that might be for our kids in the future. So we do have pieces of that, using Lexia for our ELA supplement, as well as Dream Box for math. We've enjoyed both of those. But at that primary level, what we really want to do is minimize whole group instruction. We want kids one-on-one or in a small group as much as we can get them. We want them independent learners, and we want them learning at just the right level. So we have implemented a guided reading block that's kindergarten through third grade at the same time, and these grades are just all mixed up together. And we have kids that for the first time ever, they get to stay and be part of that classroom environment. They get to be leaders in whatever group they're in. And it's been really exciting to see the growth that we've made already, just in that first year of, of modeling that. So we also have some high school kids there. Do you want to talk a little bit about the personalized learning at the?
Sure. In the high school, we, we have started, or we've worked with Reading Plus as far as a reading program where they're online, doing a lot of reading. But the, the second thing that she said, where we're not necessarily going full-fledged, get on your computer and spend the entire day behind the screen, we're changing to a Flex Mod. As you heard Liberal talk about, it sounds very similar, where you can have a student for 20 minutes, or you can have a student for 40 minutes, or you can have a student for longer than that. And they get that individual personalized learning in a large group setting, where you might have 20 to 25 in that particular classroom, and then it'll break down into smaller groups and even individual one-on-one with that student. So that's where we get that blended learning with large groups, small groups, and individuals.
For our kindergarten through third grade students, we're going to have them keeping a digital portfolio, and we use CSO for that. That's our, our platform. But we were able to see kids just get so much more engaged because they knew they had an audience for almost everything they were doing. And it shares just to their family members or to their classmates. And so they were always so excited to be able to read to their parents or take a picture of, I, you know, built this with Legos, things that would give parents a glimpse into the school day that they would never see through what comes home in the bookbag. And the nice thing about that is it just builds over time, so they can be able to, as a third grader, even go backwards to kindergarten and see where they started and the growth that they've made.
Our third goal was being engaged and empowered. And as I think about this, it's not just for the students, but also for our faculty members. And engagement is getting them interested, getting them hooked into whatever we're learning. How does that connect to the real world? And also empowered to be responsible for their own learning by giving them some choice, reflecting back on what they've learned, and then also building those 21st century skills or soft skills. One of the things that we had kind of had in the past, but we formalized it more, was internships. And in the high school area, this is mainly for the seniors. And just a few examples that we had, in our small town, some of them had to go other places. The, the one kid in the blue, he actually traveled to Phillipsburg and helped at the radio station, and he even called some basketball games. And that had always been one of his passions. We also had a couple kids that helped our technology person with fixing things, and that was really, it really got them hands-on. We had another student who was at the veterinary hospital as well. And so we plan on getting, hopefully, all of our students to have an internship at least once or twice during their high school career. Another part of engaged and empowered is looking at what you're interested in going for it. And so we have a few examples here of students in science who did a, I think it was called a Science Night at the Museum or something like that, where they looked at ACL injuries. We also had students participate in an entrepreneurship challenge and created a product. And we're actually going to have two entrepreneurship classes next year at least in high school. Also looking at what are your hobbies, looking at fixing cars, and also in some research with things that they were interested in, Genius Hour. We also, in the lower left-hand corner, are looking at career clusters, and we instituted career cruising. Our whole high school staff and some junior high staff are all trained in it. And that will be something we'll use with our community groups, where we talk with our kids every day about, you know, what's your plan? What do you, you know, have you visited this college, that kind of thing. And so now that all of us are trained, we're all on the same page with that.
As we talk just a little bit more about Genius Hour, project-based learning is so good for that collaboration, to have to work through a problem together. I never thought I would see kindergarteners have the level of conversation that they were able to have. When we first started collaborating, it was a huge argument. And I thought I had done a good job of teaching sharing and how to get along and work with one another, but I hadn't apparently, because it was things like, I want to use markers, I want to use crayons. No, 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 or you're not helping, or my arm wouldn't hurt this bad. To where we get to the end of the year, and they were really having kind conversations of, well, I really want to use Legos, but your idea is nice, so let's use yours this time, and we can do mine next time. And they were really starting to have conversations that will hopefully transfer outside the classroom all. And when we did our final reflection after we built our garden, they were saying things like, we learned to listen to each other. We learned that other people have good ideas, too. We learned that we have to work together to get really big things done. And what we didn't talk about earlier was that actually turned into a kindness project, because they decided on their own that growing kindness was more important than growing plants. And so when we did our final reflection, it wasn't about how plants grow, it wasn't about how plants need, it was really about those soft skills that we're looking for. So we also know, though, that they need time to explore their individual passions. And you can see the smiles on this little gal's face of how proud she is that she had the time that she could do that.
I'm excited that if they're learning this in kindergarten, when we get them in high school, they'll be lots farther along, and we won't have to back up and teach some of those things.
Absolutely. So for civic engagement at the grade school level, one of the things we do to be able to build in more collaboration time with teachers is we bring in our local experts. So here you see people from the sheriff's department, the highway patrol. We have our local Girl Scout leader. Our 4H leaders are really good to come in. We have just retired school counselors or grandparents in the community that like to come in and teach songs from their childhood or string games, that kind of some of those lost skills. And so our kids are with their community groups, and they travel to these different stations, and they've absolutely loved getting to explore what was school like in the past. And it's, you know, just a wonderful thing for, to bring those outside experts in while we get that time to collaborate with one another.
Another thing at the high school level is in the center there, we have hosted Veterans Day celebration the last couple years, and included Quilts of Valor with that as far as awarding quilts to veterans. And the grade school is going to take that on as one of their project-based learning, all-school projects. And so they'll be doing prep work and, and researching things ahead of time, and then help put on this final event. Some other things at the high school, we have Pride Day up on the top there in the center, where we go out to different places in the community and paint or clean up. And that one, we have done for a couple years, but we can get students more focused on, how is this going to help you in the future? We also have had some representatives come in and talk about their platforms with the high school students.
It was exciting getting ready for this. We had so many pictures, we couldn't fit them all on here. So we knew we were on the right track. For kindergarten readiness, across the state, we'll implement that screener. But we also wanted to make sure we highlighted our high-quality preschool, where those kids just get that developmentally appropriate time to play and explore live together. And another thing that we've started is a birth-to-six reading incentive, where our kids can sign up to be a part of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and they can receive a book in the mail once a month. But also, we bring them in once a month to the school, or this is actually at our county fair last year. We set up a booth, and we read to them three times a day, and they could take a book home with them then at the end. But we bring those kids in, and we have a story and a, and an activity. And then to continue to build the family relationships, then we're going to implement some school-wide family involvement, where these little people can stay and be part of the, the fun with the older elementary kids, with math nights, Makerspace nights, all sorts of things, where we get families in there with us, too. We're going to bring a, have a Bring Your Family to PE night, and just get the whole family involved. Anybody want to take that one?
The, we wanted to not just involve the teachers and make the redesign something that was new for the teachers, but we wanted it to incorporate our entire community. So we've, we not only put our heads together as teachers to see what would change our school or how we could affect our student outcome, but we talked to students in the high school. We took groups of eight to 12 students out for lunch, and we asked them questions. They gave us our input, and we took that input and put it into different aspects of our redesign program. We asked for a community business meeting, or our community businesses to come in, and they came in. We explained what redesign was. They were very receptive of it. They were excited about what that change might look like as far as students coming out of the high school, being hired by them. That's what they were really excited about was, and they gave several examples of students that came out to help them and couldn't problem solve. And so they were excited about what we were getting ready to do. So we brought the community business in. We've also brought our parents in. We had, we felt like we were very verbal and very on top of the communication issue. And we found out from parents that they didn't know what was going on. And so we redoubled our efforts, and they still didn't know what was going on. And so we, we started to monthly have meetings with them, and they came in, they voiced their concerns. We addressed them. We created an ed camp for them, or a parent camp where they came in. And so our communication with our stakeholders has been super important to us, not only to tell them what we're doing, but to get their information in so that we can incorporate their ideas into our redesign plan.
We also wanted to make sure we were very transparent with our piloting process. So we had a pilot of the week that we would share the research behind the pilot. We would share pictures and student videos or testimonies of that happening. And that was what really set our parents at ease. We had a mom tell us, it's one thing to see another school do it, it's one thing to see the research, and it's best to see it work for our kids. One of the huge benefits to this has been the networking that's been possible to meet the other districts going through this has been amazing, as we've supported each other. Jay and Tammy have been absolutely phenomenal. They've been able to step in at all the right times, exactly how we need them to. We've met people willing to help us from all over the nation, through school visits, through Skype sessions. They might be famous authors, but they'll take time to give you an hour of their time, which has been really incredible, too. One of the last things we want to do is just take time for each of us to share with you just some of our biggest takeaways. And so a year ago, I was at a place in life where I wasn't sure I was making a difference, or how to make a bigger difference than I was. I was strongly considering stepping completely away from education and into a role in youth ministry. And I felt like God just kept telling me, wait, I've got bigger plans. And I now know what those bigger plans are. I am so excited to be a part of this. I'm so excited to not just be in the classroom, changing the, the role of education for kids, but to be able to motivate that change across the board and to help other teachers implement it as well. It's been just incredible to be able to step into that leadership position. So I'm excited.
The main thing that I think about as I reflect is that this is going to be my 29th year of teaching, and I'm really excited to see some of our younger teachers feel empowered and engaged. They will help lead workshops and things with our own staff. And I've just really been excited to see that. I think it's really, it's been a difficult process, but I think it's helped our, our morale and depending on each other. One of our sayings is we want to flatten the walls between our high school and our grade school, because we're just like right in line on the street. And I really think we have.
One of my biggest takeaways outside of my students, it has really changed the way I teach and I relate with my students. I was that teacher that was always tagged as not very nurturing. I run a structured classroom, and that's just my personality. But building those relationships through communities and everything with my students has made me an entirely different teacher, and therefore my students entirely different towards me. So yeah, it's, this has been a huge benefit. But also, my daughter, I have a daughter in college, she's going into education. I have for four years, fought her, do not go into education, do not go into education. It's a thankless job. You, it's a profession that nobody values. I now feel valued as a teacher, being a part of this redesign process. I feel valued. I feel like I'm finally a professional. People are listening to me and telling, and understanding that I know what is going on in my classroom and what I need to do to best help my students. So thank you for that opportunity.
I guess I'd finish it up. They brought me on this group because I'm the oldest one, and they figured if they could get me to believe in this, that anybody else would also believe in it. My biggest takeaway was, as you progress and you have other schools work in this process, force them to do the research. It will work in this process, force them to do the research. It will open teachers' eyes as to why we do a lot of the things that we do. Personally, I've taught and always thought relationships with students was the most important, which when you look at the research, it is the most important. And that's the eye-opener is a lot of teachers that have been in it as long as I have forgot what that research told you. And you knew something was right, but you really didn't know why. And the research and the process that we went through shows us why we're doing what we're doing. And that was the biggest takeaway for me was a new challenge. It gets you out of a groove that you've been in for 20-some years and gives you a whole new breath of fresh air to step into that classroom again with those students.
I arrived in the administrative role a little different past. I had been in the district 25 years before coming on as an administrator. That's sometimes difficult. My biggest takeaway is I thought I knew the teachers I'd been teaching with and sent many of them for anywhere from five to 20-some years. I really know my staff now. And I had a different view stepping back and allowing them to lead. Because you'll see in the redesign process, we said it all along, we've lived it, it is from the bottom up. It's coming from our teachers. You've heard that from them today. They're passionate. Our stakeholders are passionate. I learned as an administrator, I had a role, but for right now is to step back and let them lead. And that's been phenomenal to see that happen. I also want to share that, we've talked about it several times, community is so important and we have to have their trust and we have to have their respect. And we have to know that when they come in and out of our buildings, they know what we're doing. And that transparency has been amazing.
Just a little while ago in August, you set Stacy and I as the leaders of this district onto a path. And what I want to tell you today is thank you for stepping out and putting your faith over your fear, just like we did. We stepped up to this challenge because it's the best work we've ever done. It's the best work you've ever inspired. The leaders behind me that surround me are the best group of people that represent the even better group of people that are, that are back in Stockton. There is no doubt in my mind that those building blocks, each of those blocks that you see there, we passed those out back in August. And we challenged each other to build something new, build something greater, to dream big. And you gave dreamers a chance to dream and to do the right thing without, without any limitations, without any boxes. And so I say to you, thank you for doing that. In Stockton, thank you for doing that across the state of Kansas. We asked two questions, two questions I stood here back in August and said, what if and why not? We took those to heart. Do you have some questions for us?
Nina, are you ready to make a motion?
Yes, sir, I am. And Stockton is in my district. And it is really exciting to see the entire district working together as one. They are small enough so they can do that. Where some of our larger districts, it would be more of a challenge. But I think maybe the most exciting part was kind of your takeaways. I have tears in my eyes because how much caring and excitement and passion you have brought to us today. So thank you very much. And with that, I move to accept the redesign plans of Stockton USD 271 for Stockton Grade School and Stockton High School as presented for the Mercury Seven Project and to be implemented by the 2018-19 school year. Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, sir.
Sally seconds that motion. Discussion? See none? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we're going to have photo opportunity and take pictures. And normally we do that with elementary and secondary separately. This will be your option. Would you prefer to just have the one group picture? Is that, is that what you want to do? Okay, we'll do it. We'll do it however you want to do it.
We'll do it together.
Relationships.
Tulips. Red tulips.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
I wonder why they're red.
Step is Eisenhower Elementary School from McPherson.
Good morning. My name is Chris Allen. I'm the principal at Eisenhower Elementary School in McPherson. And it's a distinct honor and privilege to be here today to represent McPherson USD 418 and Eisenhower Elementary School. These amazing educators. So I'm going to start by introducing who we have with us from the elementary school. Angie McDonald is our director of elementary education. Danica Fitzmore's, fourth grade teacher. Carrie Monomog is a counselor. Marcy Ruxell will be a kindergarten teacher next year. Abby Radstreet is a second grade teacher. Paul Carver is a fifth grade teacher. When we began this work last summer, we, we started by soliciting feedback from a lot of our stakeholders, our parents, Board of Education members, staff members, and our students. And we asked two simple questions. We asked, in your opinion, what does a perfect day of learning look like? And what does success look like for our students? So we gathered a lot of data and feedback and we worked to develop our shared vision. And our shared vision is Jaguars are ready to experience, explore, and to serve. Embedded within these three pillars, three main goals came to the forefront that we focused much of our work around all year. First, social-emotional learning must be a priority in order for our students to meet their maximum potential. Secondly, we must personalize learning to allow kids to be critical thinkers and problem solvers instead of just simply regurgitating information that was given to them. And thirdly, we, based on the feedback largely from our parents, we must increase the amount of music, art, and PE that students experience along with giving more choice to the students. So throughout this presentation, you're going to hear from our teachers many of the details of how we plan to meet those three goals.
Thanks. Sorry, I don't think our slides are carrying over very well here. Our first pillar of our goals are experience. Our staff really strives to provide a variety of rich experiences throughout the school year. So that's our main goal here. For our early childhood and kindergarten readiness, McPherson currently already offers full-day public preschool in each elementary building. But in order to meet the growing needs in our community, we are adding two additional preschool classrooms in the district next school year. And that will give us a total of 10 classrooms across our district. This year, our district librarian did a parent-taught literacy class at each elementary building. It was parents with children ages zero to five. And they were invited to join the class at their neighborhood school for snacks and songs and a read aloud and parent information. That went over very well. So our goal is to continue that as well as extend that throughout the school year. In order to target extracurricular activities in student choice, we created an entire day for students that we called hashtag experience. Students were offered a variety of session choices and they were able to choose their top four choices. A lot of the choices were a variety between learning experiences, hands-on, technology. There's even a taekwondo instructor who came. Staff members and community members led these sessions for students throughout the day. And it was such a huge success for students and adults alike that we plan to increase the number of hashtag experience days for this school year.
Okay, so this year from January to May, we were able to pilot having a full-time music teacher in our school. And that's something that we've never had before. We've always had to share our co-curricular teachers with the other elementary schools. And so by doing this, teachers were able to collaborate more with our music instructor. We were able to bring music into our curriculum. And we're able to do some pretty neat things. Our fourth and fifth graders got to hear a Kansas history presentation through music put on by our music teacher. And then our first and fourth grade buddies actually put on a Mexican folk dancing presentation for Cinco de Mayo for the whole school. So that was pretty fun. So next year, our school board has approved us to continue this, which means that our contact minutes for students in music will go from 90 minutes to 120 minutes. So we're really excited about that to continue collaborating with her. For art, we currently share our art teacher with one other elementary school and students have 60 minutes of art a week. So our long-term plan is to hopefully hire full-time art teachers who are able to do the same thing we are with music. As far as PE goes, our PE teacher was able to go to a state wellness conference this year. And through that, he was able to learn how to coach students and staff to living a more healthy lifestyle. So our school board has also approved us to have a full-time PE teacher in our building. And we're hoping to do the same thing that we're doing with music this past year with him as well as him being a wellness coordinator for all of our students and staff. And this will also allow us to increase those student contact minutes from 90 to 120 minutes.
The second of our three pillars, we hope to establish that each student has a spirit of exploration. We want to ensure, thank you, we want to ensure that students are given opportunities that are empowered to explore everything from their individual interests to having a global awareness. In order to do that, we've recognized the need to emphasize our personalized learning. Our team wants to be intentional in maintaining the focus of our efforts on the individual student. We look for ways that we could enrich students with their specific needs as well as empower them to own their learning. Two powerful strategies we have found and have committed to include developing long-term projects that emphasize student voice and choice. Based on training our staff received from the Buck Institute, we're implementing project-based learning experiences which will allow students to learn valuable content as well as cognitive skills. Secondly, we're utilizing a learning platform, Summit Learning, that will assist teachers in tailoring content for the individualized, for the individual student. The Summit Platform used by our fourth and fifth grade marries project-based learning goals with the personalization of content as students spend 70% of the day working within their PBL experience and 30% of the time will be spent as students work on their individualized learning opportunities within the Summit Platform. We recognize that our teachers take on more responsibilities managing and coaching a variety of student-driven projects and challenging themselves to maintain, challenging themselves to maintaining a high level of focused instruction based on data. We'd need to develop a strong team in order to be successful in keeping the students' needs as our priority. To work with the teachers, our school will be strengthened by having two innovation coaches. The objectives of these coaches will be tri-fold. First, the coaches will assist teachers in finding and implementing new technology like the Summit Learning Platform as well as a variety of other tools. Secondly, the innovation coaches will assist teachers in looking at student data in order to drive instruction for greater impact on student learning outcomes. Lastly, we will implement project-based learning in each grade level. The innovation coaches will work with teachers in developing and supporting the PBL experience.
And our final pillar that holds up our Jaguars is our serve pillar. And our district has had a vision for this long before redesign occurred. And I can thank Randy Watson for part of that vision. We have identified many targets for our students to grow towards this C-cubed ideology and of college, career, and citizenship-ready. And so our serve pillar at the elementary building fulfills that citizenship portion of that 21st century McPherson graduate. So I get to share with you how we're going to make student relationships a priority in our building. And we have focused on the social-emotional growth as a schoolwide goal as we want to create lasting relationships with our students and our families over time. So we've incorporated quite a few things in our day. We piloted since December what we call Jag Time in our building. And it's a time when all, and I mean all people in our building, come together at the beginning of our day to get our day off on the right foot. We gather each morning in our commons area as a large group and led by our music teacher, which is now full-time. How exciting. She not only leads us in song, but she leads us in dance as well. And so we all get to experience a little exciting moments in the morning. We do our pledge, morning announcements and birthdays, as well as identify a soft skill that we can all work on throughout our day. Those soft skills are given to us from community members, outside school staff, older students in our bullpup family, as well as those within our building. And we get to share in that lesson of how we can be the best person we can be. It allows us also, this Jag Time, for our building to share a soft start to our day. And so students who sometimes feel harried in the morning with their parents and busy, come into a pretty lighthearted environment to begin with, which sets them off on the right foot. This time has become one of my favorite during the day. And then once Jag Time is finished, we move back into our classrooms where we've started to implement morning meetings. Following the responsive classroom format of having a greeting, a sharing time, class activity, and then a morning message, we make time to listen and hear our kids show the most important part of themselves. This time will also include what used to be given formally by our guidance counselor, the second step curriculum that will help build that relationship in our classroom. Our fourth and fifth grades will be transitioning to a vertical loop with departmentalization, which will be new for us, which means we get to spend two years, myself as a fourth grade teacher, with kids half-day and have long-term relationships with those students. Not only that, but we also get to facilitate two of the four main subject areas, which will allow us to specialize in some of the content that we love and become an expert to assist our kids in the long-term projects that Paul had talked about earlier. And also develop some of those soft skills that we know are so vitally important. Finally, I get to share about the schoolwide philosophy that we'll be implementing called capturing kids' hearts. And as we learn about this program at our August end service, we hope that it will help us create an atmosphere that holds our small but all-important school and community of learners together. We are hoping that all these steps help create a culture of respect and love for learning that brings our students back to Eisenhower even after they've walked out our doors.
Okay, just like we value student relationships, we also really value family relationships. And so one of the things that we've done, a newly created position, is having a K5 Family Advocate modeled very closely after our pre-K Family Advocate. Marcy touched on our preschool programs, which are really strong. And they're strong because of the Family Advocate position. It really helps build that support between school and home. And so we're hoping to do the same with K5. We've also found a number, like a number of ways to bring families in this year. We've been really intentional of making them our authentic audience. So as kids are creating projects and finishing things up, we want to present it to them. The more that they come to the school, the more they feel comfortable there, the more that relationship builds. Social-emotional is one of our big goals. And so this is, it's a priority. This was our first year of implementing our mentoring program. And this is a partnership between MHS students at McPherson High School and Eisenhower. We are looking to increase the number of students this year. We were very blessed for our first-year mentoring program. We had over 40 high school mentors matched up with 40 of our Eisenhower students, but we want to increase that. And we also want to provide opportunities where the entire school gets to interact with them, where they're just our natural helpers in the building.
And we also want to provide opportunities where the entire school gets to interact with them, where they're just our natural helpers in the building. We also want to increase their frequency of the times that they come over. We also, I have a group called Counselor's Corner and it's for third through fifth graders. And the purpose behind that is to. Build relationships cross-grade level so that a third and a fourth, a third and a fifth grader can become a sixth and an eighth grader. So incoming sixth graders into middle school. Already have relationships with some older students. One of the things that will be a change for next year, I will no longer be teaching guidance classes, which will free me up to do some more intentional small groups. To serve like needs for students that might be struggling in one area or another. And also some personalized lessons as well. And then just the, the whole element of being a counselor, just providing additional student care when needed. Life-changing events happen, kids move, death of family members, things like that. I'll be more available to meet those needs.
And lastly, we have a day in the life of one of our students for next year and we have a video to share. That will show you what a day in the life of a fourth, fifth grader will be next year.
Each morning I wake up and get ready for school. I try to get there in time to visit with my friends at breakfast. We love meeting the new people who are there during the time before school starts. I was able to talk. To with the mayor and firefighters already. I can tell the day is about ready to start when the projector is turned on for, on our, for our Jag time. Since it's Friday and I am a fifth grader, I get to meet with my family. It's been fun getting to know kids from each grade level, but I have the most fun teasing the fourth graders because they are friends with my sister. During Jag time, we sing a song, then do the pledge of allegiance and listen to a short message, what it means to be a good person. Finally, each family is dismissed to class by Miss Simling's song. My job is to walk the pre-K student to his classroom and make sure he gets there. I can't believe how small they are. When I get back to my classroom, I have Miss Fitz, Miss here, as my homeroom teacher. She has us take attendance and give our lunch request to the office. Then we have a short morning meeting. This Fitz challenges us to write three kind things about someone in our class. She uses examples from the book or reading in Readalab. After the challenge, we did a short lesson from our second step-up. It was about the difference between tattling and reporting phone. At first I thought it wasn't very interesting until I started thinking about meeting the nine-one-one operator of our last experience. They talked about getting calls that weren't emergencies and that made me think about why tattling is something we work on. Since I began my day in Miss Fitz's room, that's where I start my first subject. I learned math and social studies with Miss Fitz and reading and science with Mr. Carver. My first subject is math. I love math because this year has been the best. Math has always been easy for me, but in the last few years I've been getting bored because some people in my room need extra help and I didn't. Now my teacher pulls us back to the table to work on things that we really need. Once we're done with the lesson, I have a couple of options. First, I know I need to finish a lesson for my individual time. We're learning area in math right now. Once I'm done with my lesson, I get to work on my project. Since we're learning about area, I'm waiting to build. A Lego wall in the library for our maker space area. I have to find out how many of the flat plates we need to cover our whole wall. I even called Legoland earlier in the week to talk to the manager about how they got bricks to stay glued down because I'm worried about them falling. Off if too much weight is on, put on the squares. Once math ends, we go to Miss Simling's class before we go to Mr. Burkhart's. Mr. Burkhart's. I like having Miss Simling and Mr. Burkhart here every day. Not only do I get to see them during music and PE, but they also help me out on my projects during other times in the day. This week, we've been working on Native American dances. We're learning the rhythm and music, but then we, we get to make the dance moves in PE. After PE, we head back to Miss Fitz's class. I like that. I get to stay with Miss Fitz all morning long. When we get back, social studies works a lot like math does. Miss Fitz meets with some of us in small groups, but also we get to do projects. Today, she's meeting with the whole class to talk about how early Native Americans traveled from place to place, following the Bible. I like animals, but I'm not sure I want to burn the buffalo chips in my camp, for my children. After social studies is my favorite part of the day. We get to go to lunch recess. I like how this year we go to recess and then into lunch. We get a little longer to eat. Now I can get my lunch, sit down, and even have time to just talk to my friends. When lunch is finished, I go to Mr. Carver's class for reading. I love that even in his class, the, the way the class works. Is the same as Miss Fitz's. We have small groups that work on things that we really need help with. But also we get to work on projects too. My project is reading, writing a play. I've already scheduled a time to meet with Miss Simling to record music to make my play more suspenseful. Miss Harrison is going to, to help me find the play in the maker space and we can post it to our school's YouTube channel. Mr. Carver is also my science teacher. Today, we are going to work on the food chain. He has a project he's done where we make stations. On the playground that represent each stage of the food chain. It's in the American Ninja Warrior, life cycling. We've been working on it for a few days, but I've already been able to see my work hanging on. Now my individual learning lesson seems deep and I've been able to finish two yesterday. I can't believe the day is almost over. Miss Fitz has us meet again before the bell rings and we get to talk about things that we've learned or things that are just on our mind. I'm glad my teachers have worked on making school like this. I've learned a lot and I feel like I get. To make more decisions about how and what I can do to learn. I know that my teachers are all working hard to make sure that my day fits my needs.
All right. Next up, McPherson Middle School. Wow, this past year has completely flown by. And I cannot believe it has been nearly a year ago that we started on this journey. It's a tremendous honor to be here representing McPherson Public Schools, McPherson Middle School, our staff and our students. This past year has been some of the hardest, yet most rewarding work that I have been fortunate to be a part of in my educational career. Never before have I been more proud of a group of teachers, not just those on the redesign team. But the staff as a whole, for without them, this would not be possible. Several of our members of our MMS redesign team are here today to share our redesign story. It's our honor to introduce these dedicated teachers to you today. We have Jackie Bonham blessed, who is an eighth-grade American history teacher. We have Jackie Colegrove, sixth-grade math teacher, Jenny Vernon, who is an eighth-grade ELA teacher. Taryn Vedder, who is a seventh-grade ELA teacher, the infamous Shiloh Vincent, our secondary director of ed. And Gordon Moan, our superintendent is with us today. As we work through, have worked through our redesign process, we routinely relied upon. These fundamental principles or non-negotiables to help guide us and ensure that we were on the right path. During this process, our eighth-grade art students joined in the fun and created posters. Discussing each of those nine structures. So after we were able to assemble our redesign team, one of the first steps for us was to begin to define what our vision is. Miss Colegrove is here today to discuss that process and our findings.
And that's Brandon Simling. I don't think he introduced himself, but he's our principal at the middle school. For our vision, we heard from staff, students, board of ed members, parents, community. They all helped participate and we used our current district vision and we kind of built upon that. To create our new school vision, which is students will be future-ready through balanced personal learning. That work all led through, led to three different goal areas, social emotional learning, academic success, and civic engagement. We had our main redesign team and then we each kind of headed up one of the three areas. And then we had twenty-two other staff members from our building help us research or investigate these different goal areas. We had the three goal areas and we had set specific goals that we wanted to accomplish in the next couple of years. Our social emotional goal is going to use TESSAR data, which will be explained a little bit later. But we want to increase each of those goals, each of those areas grit, teamwork, composure, curiosity, and leadership. By five percent. And those numbers like seem kind of low, but it's a zero to three scale. Our next one for academic success to help us measure that, we are going to hopefully increase teachers' knowledge and use of project-based learning. We want to also increase our students' scores on ELA and math state assessments. And then for civic engagement, we are using the Civic Advocacy Network to help us measure our civic engagement progress.
To match the district vision of having students that are citizenship-ready, we agreed that social emotional learning needed to be one of our redesign goal areas. When discussing what that means, we refer to the definition on the KSDE fact sheet, but ultimately, we are looking to educate confident students strong in personal and employability skills. The McPherson Middle School was selected to be part of the ACT TESSAR pilot. This was, this is an assessment system designed to measure social and emotional learning skills. But then it's not just the assessment. Once strengths and areas for improvement have been determined. The TESSAR provides a playbook or a curriculum guide to support educators with resources and interventions based on our students' needs. PAC time was another relationship-building piece that we brought in. This current year, we piloted the PAC time with just grade-level students. So as an eighth-grade teacher, you would have had eighth-grade students. For the 2018-2019 school year, we have decided to create multi-level PACs in order to foster building-wide relationships. Future plans include creating relationships with the elementaries, kind of at that seventh-fifth. So I like hearing about the, the, what the elementaries are doing too. So that the relationships will be there for the incoming sixth graders and we'll have relationships already built with the current eighth graders. Capturing Kids' Hearts is a transformational school-wide approach to developing and improving relationships between the students and the staff. We hope it will result in reduced discipline, in increased attendance, and increased achievement. It provides a framework for consistency in approaches to discipline and conflict. And again, like Eisenhower, we will be participating in that training in August to be able to, to set those skills for the teachers to implement in our classrooms.
So some more about academic success. Currently, we had content-level teams where the math teachers were together, the science teachers were together, but we're going to move that to grade-level teaming. We'll have two teams per grade level. That allows us to share students where we can have more collaboration and cross-curricular projects. We're also going to implement the Summit Learning Platform. The perks that we love about it is it's standard-based curriculum, there's, encourages our students to be self-directed learners, there's peer support. It allows students to set goals. And then part of that is with mentoring from our teachers. The students are working on meaningful projects. And then we can also personalize their instruction. The four main areas are the cognitive skills, the content knowledge, the habits of success, and the sense of purpose. So a little bit more about each of those. For project time, it's the real-world connections involving collaboration, communication, and critical thinking skills. The projects are PBL or project-based learning projects supported by the Buck Institute. The projects are customizable by the teacher and allow for authentic learning by the students. These are the thirty-six cognitive skills students are assessed on through their projects. And these skills carry over from subject to subject and from grade level to grade level. And seventy percent of a student's grade is based on these cognitive skills, which is a shift from the traditional school model. Then we have the habits of success. These are infused through all aspects of Summit Learning. And they're a focus of the mentoring meetings between the, the teachers and the students. Personalized learning time is another aspect of Summit Learning. And this time allows for teachers to target instruction individually or in small groups. Instruction is data-driven and students move through standards-aligned content when they are ready. And then the mentoring, students mentor or teachers mentor a student in their PLT or personalized learning group. One-on-one for at least ten minutes a week. Students reflect on their learning and set goals for the upcoming week. And they're also focusing on those habits of success. Another positive about the Summit Learning Platform is that there's ongoing professional development and support that's provided throughout the school year and the summer. Our teachers will be attending training in June and July, depending on when they're available, a four-day training.
And to the nitty-gritties, the daily schedule. This did not come easy for us. As you can see, what has been resoundingly clear to, from all schools you've heard from today. We care about our students individually. We wish for what rises to the top in our thinking is their personal learning. Time and mentor time with them. And so with this daily schedule, we do start each day with what we have piloted the PAC time. You see twelve minutes of that, that is every day. Our, our piloting gave us just twice a week with them and they were a little on the hit and miss too. This is an everyday. We feel it's that important. And so our schedule includes. The core classes, the content teachers, each one. Then. We move on to what the personalized learning time means to the student and the teacher. Personalized learning, what you've heard so far, is very much individualized. So that students know what they can focus on, they go with their passions, and we can lead them in that direction. As content teachers, we will have them individually each day. The group of kids from PLT will be different from our PAC time kids. Mondays will look different than Tuesdays through Fridays. Monday will, the students will have PLT during their content classes and still attend their, their electives. Then Tuesdays through Thursdays, we will have PLT during the seventh hour of the day. The one-on-one mentoring will take place during that time. And as you've heard of Second Step. As, which leads them to the soft skills that, that we can help them with being, being the person they need to be in this world. That takes place during PLT. Naviance is as well, our, our capturing time for. Learning what they would like to be as, as a working person in this world.
Okay, I get to talk about civic engagement, which I think is like very important. Of course, civic engagement is helping our students be engaged citizens, thoughtful and informed. And, and the first bullet there, I'm really excited about because. And, and the first bullet there, I'm really excited about because I feel at McPherson Middle School, we already have teachers that are integrating civic engagement in their specific content areas and core classes. So that's the first bullet under civic engagement. Community service hours. McPherson Middle School, and actually the whole district, requires service hours to complete as, as a student. So eighth grade, by eighth grade, students in the middle school will need to complete 15 hours of community service. What we hope to expand is to make those involvement civic learning hours more into, why are we doing this and more of a passion? I really am making a difference, so more of an engagement service. Civic Advocacy Network, we have applied for that first ever. I see it as a network to help us expand the civic engagement process in our, in our school. Talking about civic engagement, the top-right, the top-right picture there, I had the greatest fortune to bring these three girls to Topeka, to the first-ever civic engagement conference. And those three, they are our Stuco leaders and truly, they are an example of what civic engagement could be. Their campaign promise that they promised was to, finally, after like 10 years, we are going to bring backpacks to the middle school. We're going to let every single person bring, carry a backpack. And campaign promises, you know, in years past, uh, never happened. Finally, a campaign promise that actually was fulfilled. And just seeing them grow and the process that they went through, and then they were able to present what they did at MMS to the conference. So they were one of the presenters and, and they were awesome. So that's, that was a highlight of my year in redesign. And we also, the last component, we're trying to bring CNN 10, just as a resource, also junior scholastics, just as a platform, I guess, to really talk about civil discourse, media literacy, and how to become informed, thoughtful citizens. Next. Okay, long-term goals. And we've got a lot. But you can see some of them, adding different electives, really trying to expand our business, industry, and community relationships. I feel like we have a good relationship bringing people in the community into our schools, but we need to, you know, expand on that and do better. Again, hopefully, the Civic Advocacy Network. The other, like I've already talked about, expanding those civic learning hours more into a involvement. And then we want to bring in training to our, all of our teachers on civil discourse and media literacy, definitely. And just the ongoing training of excitement with Summit Learning and our Capturing Kids' Hearts. We see that as our, our future goals, too.
And we would like to invite you to visit our website. There's more there than what you've seen today. Visit, please, see some details, some shared stories that we have, including some different structures, all the structures and the progress that we've made through them. We'd also like you to see our specific names. If there's any questions that you'd have, you'd like to get ahold of us, you can see which, which little areas we all worked on. That's important for us to know that you know what we're all about. And so, our trips, our training, that that brought us to where we are. What rises to the top, as I think through this full morning, is, are two things. And one being student ownership of their learning. The second is relationships. As a, as an English teacher, many of my students come back to me and maybe what comes to their mind is their memory of the Jabberwocky and they can't believe they still remember it. It's not just that, it is that they remember the relationship we had. Yes, we're teachers, we're passionate of what we do. That we've got under control, always ready to learn more. But what matters most to us, I believe, is the passion the kids have in relationships. So our visits did this for us. We were to, we were able to see so many of the different schools that are doing such things. We saw these two highlights, very imperative to what they are doing. And so we thank you for, for all of that, allowing us to see that that we experienced. We want to say thank you to Jay for making this happen, helping us get to where we are. So, thank you.
Any questions?
What, how many other schools do you have besides, in your district?
We have, we have four elementary schools, one middle school, and one high school.
Okay. Is, now you've, McPherson District has been sort of on the cutting edge for a decade or so. What, do you have plans to replicate the redesign in your other buildings? I'm looking at Gordon.
We began the process in all of our buildings this year with a year timeline for Eisenhower and Middle School and probably a two-year timeline for the three elementaries. So we've taken a lot of the information that came from KSDE that Jay and Tammy brought us, the work we've done there, and Angie's work with her three elementaries and Shiloh's work with her high school. So we hope by about this time next year to have four more of these fully completed redesigns. And truthfully, for me, the huge challenge is, is our high school. And we're working hard on that, but I think we've got some good foundations here, good examples to show and to follow. Other questions?
Yeah, what you've, what you've shown us today, by the way, is extremely impressive and we appreciate that. Nina?
I'd like to know what the Buck Institute is.
Angie, you want to talk about Buck a little bit? You probably know more than any of us. Where are you at?
I've been hearing that for two days.
Okay, sure. And to let you know, our board did send Chris and Shiloh and Brandon and I, we got to go to an instructional leadership institute on Buck Institute. They are the premier and they'll, they'll say they're the gold standard on project-based learning training and they really are. So they set the bar very high on what project-based learning looks like. And so that's, they're the organization that does that. So there are ways to train people up and how to put projects together and it's a continuum. So we are not anywhere near a gold standard project-based learning initiative right now, but the idea is that we'll move towards that. So we're going to coach up our teachers and that's where the innovation coaches at Eisenhower come in as well, so that Chris and I and those two innovation coaches can help teachers, because what I think Tammy actually shared with us through her doctorate work is what she's finding with project-based learning is that people, or school districts will put that in place and it eventually fails. And it fails because there's not that support to help the teachers continue that process and to get better and better. And so we put something in place and we keep it stagnant and then it just kind of falls apart. So our intent is to really get to that gold standard and we figure in a couple of years, we'll get there. So that's what it is.
Thank you.
I see that you're starting, and I think it was both groups, Capturing Kids' Hearts. Do you also do, I thought I saw Second Step.
Yes.
Okay, so tell me how those two are going to work together.
Right, so our second step, no, I have some up here either, I forget. Our second step will be taught on Mondays during Seventh Hour by the teacher to their PLT group. And that'll lead us through a lot of those lessons of bullying, how to treat others, all those components. Capturing Kids' Hearts is going to be a whole-school implementation of, not only help us on the discipline side, but also help us in relationship building, so.
So you see those two programs working pretty well together. I see your teachers nodding.
Yes.
So they've been trained and they know, so, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
I think, too, one of the powerful things that we were able to do, you never understand how things really work until you get to go out and do another school and see that work. And we saw some excellent examples of that. And I think one of the powerful things that we have now in the state is we're going to have seven districts with 14 schools and can be demonstration sites for other schools in Kansas. And I really think that's powerful. You won't have to go to New York or Colorado Springs to see great things. You can go down the road and see your neighbor. That'd be great for us.
Yeah, I think that's great. Thank you. Ready again?
I remember, Randy, I don't know how many years ago it was. Do you?
It's too many now.
Too many, 10, 10-plus years ago, I was invited every year by Randy to meet with his board at Christmas time for a little lunch and they would share with us their concerns with the legislators and the state board member and, and the things that they had in mind. And Randy, in this particular meeting, said, "I have something we want to share with you." And he shared with us his whole C3 concept and asked me what I thought. And I said, "Well, if you're serious and, and this is what you're going to do, this is exactly what I think we need to, to do statewide, to move Kansas schools to where they need to be and be actually student-centered, student-focused learning centers." And he was serious. And that, that was, so McPherson has kind of been the point of the spear, in my view, in this, in this road to where we are today and where we're going with this school redesign. Redesign started back when Randy was superintendent of that school and things began happening there. And I've, I've said many times in many places that if we could, if we could take McPherson's idea and their plan and what they were doing for students and take that statewide, we would be, we would be leaders in the nation. And, and our goal is to be leaders in the world in, in the success of our students. And I was so impressed by the fact that they, they didn't just do this on a whim. It wasn't just Randy's idea. But the board, the school board saw that even though they were a blue-ribbon school, their school, their students were not really prepared for, for the next steps after they left. And they said, "We have to do something about that." And so they did this, this investigation and, and a community work to find out what the community needed and then built their program around that. That is really powerful, I think. And it's going to be a little different in every place, but I am so proud of McPherson and what, what you're, what you're doing and continuing to do in leading this effort. So I, I just want to say, keep doing what you're doing. I'm, I'm very, very pleased with, with what I've seen. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that this board accept the redesign plans of McPherson USD 418 for Eisenhower Elementary and McPherson Middle School and beyond as presented for the Mercury Seven Project and to be implemented by the 2018-19 school year, which is almost here.
Is there a second? John seconds the motion. Any discussion? On the favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Unanimous? And now we'll take this opportunity for photo ops and I invite the commissioner and Jay and Tammy and Ken to join us and we'll do it by building. State Board of Education is called to order. Please note that we have eight members present who had to leave and I'll turn it over to Tammy.
Okay, first up this afternoon is Twin Valley, so we'll turn it over to them.
Good afternoon and thanks for allowing us to come and talk to you this afternoon. I told these guys I'm going to spend about two minutes and that's all I'm going to do because they've done all the work. But I'm the superintendent at Twin Valley. I saw all of you last fall, I do believe. I just want to talk a little bit about some of the stuff that we've really worked out from a system perspective. We've really worked to try to isolate or make sure that all of our people understand in our small district, we have to do this together as a team and it can't be in isolation. It can't be one individual building working on their own. We're not big enough to splinter and do different things. We have to really allocate our resources in a way that makes us efficient and that's been a, one of our focuses. Another thing, as I talked about, I believe, last fall, we talked about the importance of trying to bring all stakeholders along. Even in a small district setting, there's a ton of resistance to any sort of a change, even if it's a change of clothing, for example. It really doesn't matter. There's always, "Why are you doing it that way? We don't want to. We've always done it this way." And that happens in all groups, whether it's the kids, the parents, the Board of Education members, administrators, teachers. And that's been a real difficult thing to try to get our folks to understand in some respects, but not in others. So we really focused on trying to get investment and not compliance because once again, if we try to get people to comply, we'll have minimal, we'll have minimal return, I think, on our investment. And our focus has been on student learning as opposed to teaching and that's what we want to continue to work on. And I think I've talked about that as well and to foster student success. And I think another big piece that we're going to continue to evolve or try to develop is shared responsibility and accountability. Because if they're expecting us as administrators or principals or whatever it might be, to make sure that we're doing a great job with this, we're not going to be successful. We have to have everybody on the train and that goes a little bit back into that investment, not compliance. And as a result of that, what we have done is, as a district, our Board of Education adopted a set of tenants. And we've got three levels of tenants. We've got student tenants, teacher tenants, and parent tenants. And in those tenants, you're going to find that Mr. Nightengale is going to go over in just a second. There's both a responsibility and an obligation on the part of each one of those groups in terms of the success of our initiatives. So I'm going to let those guys do the, the talking. They've done all the work, they and their staffs. I've just sat in the background and tried to guide as much as I can as, as our board, but I'm just really, really proud of their efforts and, and I know that you guys will have a lot of questions for them, but they've, they've done a great, great job. So I'll let Mr. Nightengale take over.
Good afternoon. Well, it's always tough to follow lunch, so if I see it nodding off, I'll break in to interpret a dance for you or something to kind of lighten things up a little bit.
Please, please stay awake, colleagues.
Yeah. One of the things I'm not going to do is read the slides to you. I know you guys have got those in front of you and you can see them and so I'm, I'm not going to do that. That said, I am going to read the first one. And that is basically, my redesign team took the tenants that we developed and we created somewhat of a loose mission statement, if you will, that we tried to follow and use as a filter to pass any of our decisions through. And that was the Twin Valley future graduates will possess expert learning capacities and real-world employability skills developed through intentional exposure to trainings and interventions, allowing them to become competent and competitive members of society and the workplace in a post-secondary world. And so as, as I go through this and we talk about some of the initiatives, those are the things we thought about and we passed all of our decisions through. This is a lineup, mugshots of my redesign team and a bunch of great people that participated in, in all of the work we did and want to thank you for the opportunity to do that because I'll tell you, for those of us that education is our chosen vocation, this has been a great opportunity for us to step back and reevaluate and change things because as you know, it's been done 100 years this way. And so to be able to go in and maybe, maybe loosen some of those restraints and do some things differently was a, a great opportunity. And Sylvia is one of the members and she's here today and I'm going to, I'm going to force her to jump up and say something here in a little bit, but... So one of the first tenants that we looked at was creating opportunities for students to develop validated skills, in other words, guaranteed curriculum that was based and, and, and it was given in a personalized manner and that it was done not based on chronological age. And that's a drastic change from what's been done in the past. So allowing a student that's excelling to move forward, to allow them to do so rather than hold them back and wait for the rest to catch up because we've been holding some students back. And so, and obviously, we focus reading, writing, and math in that component. I threw a picture up here only because I'm going to refer to it later. It just fit better there, so it goes there. I'll come back to it and just discuss it. If you'll notice, it's just kids working in various areas of the building. A second tenant we had was helping students develop a capacity to become expert learners. You know, not to become, you know, to be able to cover Algebra II, but to be able to understand how to think and how to learn for themselves and where to go get information if they don't have it. And, and some pillars that go along with that, that cognitive skill, cognitive skill, content knowledge, habits of success, and sense of purpose. Tenant three was about their ability to have access to training and intervention opportunities, to participate in activities that were real-world, to be able to put into place, you know, those social-emotional skills, actually put them to work. And then finally, obviously, teach them what those are and how to utilize those. So those were the four student tenants that we used and focused on as we went through our work. And I mentioned those first only because, again, we did this from a student-centered perspective and so we really looked at students first and then we ran them through the remainder of the filters. So how we're going to get there, and I just did a, a real brief listing of some of these things, but developing student agency. things, but developing student agency, students being able to learn some self-management skills, you know, instead of having a handbook rule that says, "By God, cell phones are not allowed in the classroom," then let's teach the kids how to manage that, because we've all got cell phones, and we have to ignore those because we've got to get other things done. That's part of that student agency piece. Blended learning, being able to learn in many facets. A great example of that is you can watch 20 YouTube videos on how to re-kid a carbureator, but until you actually do one, those videos are going to do you no good. Self-skills assessment, then being able to determine what things they need to do better at or get better at. And again, I'm not going to read the entire list to you there, but you can kind of see through those, and those are the vehicles we're going to use. We also want to be data-driven. In other words, not only are we going to put a list on the wall and say, "Here are the things we're going to do," how are we going to know whether or not that's being successful? And with the blended learning format, the thing with that is we're allowing students to choose both their path and their pace, meaning based on their IPS, based on what they've decided to do career vocation-wise, what's the best path for them to get the knowledge they need to be successful in that? And then choosing that pace, probably the biggest hurdle we anticipate in that is teaching kids that no pace is not a pace, and that'll be probably one of the first lessons that we've got to learn as a staff. And then all the assessments that we're going to be using to create additional data points, because we don't want to fix one data point that we're going to choose whether or not our initiative is a success or a failure based on that one data point. Then there's some intangibles, or some anecdotal information that we need to keep abreast of as well. Through our advisory components, we are going to have community service projects students are going to be involved in, engaging academic progress through the advisory, and I can talk more about that later, a focus on career preparation, so students determining what it is they want to do, and then setting their goal for that, and then setting job shadowing opportunities, and maybe some of those service projects related to some of those. Campus visits, we've got a district-wide initiative that we've created where we've got seven through 12, we're going to be getting students off campus, off our campus and onto other campuses. And then finally, we do an internship, a job shadowing program for seniors, and we want to push that down into the lower grades. Then we have a list of parent tenants, literally, there are only two. The first one is basically both a commitment from us, as well as we're asking the parents to make a commitment that they're going to be actively involved in their students' learning. And a couple of the things, a couple of ways we're going to do that is, first off, through our advisory, there's going to be a monthly minimum established for how many contacts with parents our staff is going to have, and then student-led conferences where students, they lead that conversation. And we started piloting that last year, and I know a lot of schools have done that, but we do it a little bit different, and probably that's the greatest amount of feedback we got from us, parents that talk about when they got home that night, they had a conversation with their son they'd never had before, their eighth-grade son's talking about careers and talking about, "He's looked into this school and that school, and he wants to intern at this, maybe job shadow that," and so that's a conversation I've never had with my kid before. The second tenant here is that we, as a staff, will support the parents in that role. Again, we're asking, the first tenant is, we're asking them to take a role, but then the second was, we've got to provide that opportunity, and we've got to do that intentionally. And we all give lip service to that, but being intentional about it and creating opportunities and mechanisms for that to happen. And some of those include parent camps, and you may have already heard about our parent camps. You guys know what those are about, but I'd be more than happy to explain that to you if you don't. Informational meetings, parent workshops, parent boot camps, those types of things. Then finally, through the various surveys we did through our pilot, one of the things we heard back from our parents was they really wanted to, they felt like the best way I could communicate with them or get information out to them was via email. And so I've created quite a database of parent email, and so they want to hear from us in that fashion, and so that's what we're going to try to be cognizant of that. Finally, the staff tenants, you know, the things we're going to talk about is making sure we provide them the training necessary to be able to do the things we're asking them to do, because we've asked the staff to do a lot. And when I say that, understand, when I say "we," it's been the staff, because my staff divided up into research teams, and the staff drove this. And so it's not like the principal said, "We're going to do X, Y, and Z." The research committee on scheduling said, "We're going to do X, Y, and Z." The research committee on social-emotional skills said, "We're going to do this." And so if and when I had feedback, very minimal, but when I had feedback from staff, you know, it wasn't me against them. When they came to me with a concern, I'd say, "Hey, you know, that's a great question. Maybe I've talked to the scheduling committee about that." You know, it really forced that peer communication and raised the level of professionalism in my building. But so we're going to create opportunities for them, and that is through, we did Buck Institute training here just two weeks ago. We've got Summit Training coming up in two weeks, advisory training. I've got some staff going to a career advisor training session thing this summer, and they're coming back as kind of a train-the-trainer, and they're going to train the rest of our staff on it. Then finally, as administrative team, we're currently building our professional development calendar for next year, and we're trying to identify all of those areas that we think are things we need to shore up. Tenant two for the staff is that they understand that they're never going to allow a student either to move ahead when they're not ready or hold a kid back when they're ready to move on. And so that really feeds hand-in-hand into that personalized learning component, that we've got students that are ready to move on, and we're not going to hold, you know, 25% of the class back, because I'm just not ready to move on. We need to meet those kids where they're at to get them going on their path at their pace, and that's kind of the goal there. And we're going to do that through the blended learning formats, our advisory teams, through our career advisement that we're doing, with the academic advisement going through our advisory, and then finally, the community outreach that we'll be doing with our parents, creating parent panels. We've got a lot of incredible parents in our district that, I mean, we've got everything from brain surgeons to crane operating companies, and we have not tapped into those resources in terms of being able to have those parents come in and serve as a professional panel to come in and answer questions to kids on, "How did I get here? You know, how did I become successful, and what was my path about?" And then the next staff tenant was the staff all having a leadership role in our school community. I think oftentimes, we've got into the habit of, "Well, the administration's going to run this, and I'm just going to shut the door in my classroom and do my thing." But instead, what we're going to do with that is we want to turn that, keeping, not only do we have the advisory teams, that's where every teacher is assigned an X number of students, that is their advisory team, 712, that they are developing these community outreach programs for, they're meeting with those kids and doing career planning with them, and academic planning, goal-setting for the week, et cetera. But they're also still in those research committees that we developed last fall, and they're going to continue in those research committees because we don't think we've arrived. Although we have a plan that we're going to show you, we don't think we've arrived. We know there's going to be things we have to change. Every time we thought we had the pilot perfected, we'd put it in play and then realize, "Crap, that didn't work," so we've got to make a change. So we have to make adjustments. One of the first things we did was we turned our bells off, so we don't have bells in our building. What that really gave us the flexibility of doing was, if we decide on Monday a change needs to happen, we can implement that plan Monday afternoon. I don't have to wait for...
Excuse me, just a second. We're live-streamed, so we get...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. We don't have to wait for the bell company to come out and make an adjustment to our schedule, so we can just make the change on the fly. It was interesting how much pushback initially we got from staff on that, but in reality, once we got into it, it was actually the staff that struggled with the change, not the kids. The kids were pretty good with it, so, yeah. So in year one, our plan for year one is as follows, and that is that we want to do the things we've been piloting. We've got an adjusted schedule that includes an advisory schedule on Mondays with a basic classroom schedule Tuesday through Friday. We do something that's called Power Hour, referring back to that picture you saw of all the kids. One of the pushback I got from people when we talk about Power Hour, basically what Power Hour is, we give the kids an hour for lunch. They can do whatever they want. If they want to eat for four minutes or they want to eat for 40 minutes, they're welcome to do that. We also open up the gyms. If they want to shoot baskets, they can do that, too. But what we found is, the kids are using that time to do academic stuff. I mean, we have a handful of kids that are going to shoot baskets every day, but all those kids are academically okay. They've got their stuff taken care of. But we've got kids hammering through schoolwork. They're in the libraries, there's not a place to sit. Locker sections, certain classrooms they go into because they can work in there. We have kids that have added to their college schedule. They're taking a lot more college classes because they've got time during the school day. They know they can count on to get the work done because they're three-sport athletes plus their FFA, plus their STUCO, plus their this and that. And we had a couple of girls, the KASB group came around and toured our building, and one of those girls made the comment, "For the first time, I'm able to actually sit down and have dinner with my family in the evenings because I can get all my stuff done during the school day." I thought that was pretty powerful, because when we surveyed the students, what they asked us for was time. They said, "Can you give us time to get stuff done?" And so that's what we did with Power Hour. That was the purpose of that. Running back through that, then the personalized learning, the blended learning component we're going with, I know you guys have probably heard quite a bit about Summit, and we're one of the schools going with Summit, and so the blended learning's going to really fit in well to that pace and the ability for students to move at their pace. The parent involvement, there's a list of items there, and then the social-emotional, the items we'll be doing with that in year one, that will be starting in August, so those are the things we plan to do. Some of those we've already got in place, some have been a part of our pilot and have actually just become a part of what we do now. All of this is planned year two. Understand, my goal, I'm trying to be a little aggressive about this. Clearly, this is the year three, but I would like to see us here as quickly as possible. And that is completely immersed in that personalized scheduling, allowing students to pick their classes based on where they plan to be and getting that done. I may be sitting in Mrs. Kavasik's classroom, but I'm working on math, not English, you know. Sylvia, would you like to say anything related to staff involvement or student involvement in this?
I'm Sylvia Kavasik, and I teach both English and ag education, so I have a wide variety of the things that I do. I just saw Mr. Watson speak at the state FFA convention. So some of the things that are really encouraging, I think, with our pilot and everything that we're doing, is that we're really involving the students in the process, and I think that's really important, because the kids feel like it belongs to them as well. And they spend so much time at school, so much of their life is at school, so it's nice to have them involved in that process. And we have consulted the kids using like a Google form where they fill it out with questions that we've given them, but we also consult them and sit down and talked with them in different groups. And so we had our typical upper-echelon kids, I guess you could say, that we spoke with to see what their ideas were on this. But we also spoke with the more unlikely characters, and I thought that was really good of us to be able to see two different ends of the spectrum, to see how it affected the kids. And we talked to them before we even started, and then during the process, and then reevaluated at the end of the school year. So I think that's really important, that we get the kids involved as much as the staff or as much as the parents or even more. So that's my biggest thing, is that the kids are involved and they feel like it belongs to them as well.
Thanks, Sylvia. And the last thing on there was the post-secondary success strategy implementation. Basically, we're a series of two-year surveys. I know that the board's looking at our post-secondary success rate, and we've created our own in terms of our post-secondary success following elementary, and then another post in terms of what we're doing as they enter high school, so we can change what we're doing with our onboarding of students, getting them ready for freshman year, getting them ready for eighth grade, getting them ready for seventh grade, et cetera. So that's the high school side. Steven?
Hello, everyone. I'm Steven Kimmy, principal of Tuscan Schools. We are a pre-K through 12 facility with about 160 kids total, so we want to echo what our superintendent had said. We understood right from the get-go that we had to approach this from a pre-K through 12 perspective. We had to set a goal of what we wanted a graduate to look like, and then we had to back map to try to figure out each step along that path, what we could do to get them there. Our redesign team was then made up of both grade school staff and junior high and high school staff, everything from all the way down to third grade to junior high, high school sped staff. We, the previous year, had developed a statement in regards to some MTSS behavior work that we had done along the lines of Safe and Civil Schools and PBIS, and we found that that really lent itself to the direction we wanted to go with redesign. So we developed this as our vision statement throughout this redesign, fostering tolerance and scholarship in every student. Now, to figure out exactly where we wanted to go, much like what Curtis had said, we visited with staff, we visited with parents, and we visited with students to try to gain some information on where we can improve and what we could be doing better. From all of those survey results, we were able to whittle those down into four core areas, those being the personalized learning projects, social-emotional learning, and family and community engagement. Now, I'll go through each one of those and take a look at what we're going to be doing next year that we haven't done in the past. For personalized learning, we are going to be using Summit Learning for grades fourth through 12, and this is going to be our first year, so it won't be full implementation, but we're starting to get our hands dirty in that area. And that's a personalized learning format, which you probably have already heard about. And then at the K through three level, we are going to be using a program called Zern. Zern is a math program that is all online and allows kids to progress at that personalized level and continue on as they show mastery of the content. Also, at the grade school level, we are going to be implementing some co-teaching for at least part of the day as we get started, and then moving forward, as we move forward, continue to incorporate more and more of that. Now, with our small school size, we're actually going to be blending grade levels, so we're going to have K1 paired together, 2, 3 paired together, and then 4, 5 paired together. And we're really excited to see how that's going to work, because we think that'll also give an opportunity for kids to progress at their own level, because you're no longer stuck in just the K classroom or the third-grade classroom. As you continue to master that content, you'll be able to move right along. For projects, you know, this was probably one of the most difficult things to try to pilot this year, because there is a lot of training that needs to take place and a lot of time to plan those out. So we didn't really get to pilot much of this this year, but we did send almost all of our grade school staff to the Buck Institute Training that took place down in Wichita. And then we also have a good portion of our high school staff that's going to be attending the Summit Learning, which also incorporates projects. One of the good projects that we really had this year was a clothing takeaway drive, but I'll tell you, that was engineered by a junior, and unfortunately, she did most of that work on her own, and we just kind of helped out. And it didn't really count for any class that she was doing. This was just pure altruism. She just wanted to help. And so our goal is really to find ways that we can make that part of our curriculum and part of what we do as a school, and that students can get credit for that instead of just doing it on their own. For social-emotional learning, at the grade school level, we implemented what's called families. It's pretty similar to the advisory or mentoring groups that have been set up at the high school, but those families were designed to build relationships both cross-grade level and with high school students. Once a month, our high school students would come down and visit our families. We would call them cousins, and trying to make sure that we meet the needs of as many kids as possible, and that each kid has somebody in the building that they can turn to when they need it. And that's, like I said, a direct extension of what's going to take place at the high school with their advisory mentoring program, so that's something they should be fully acclimated with. And family and community engagement. Like Curtis had mentioned, we did pilot student-led conferences this last spring, and we heard a lot of good reports about that. We also piloted a parent camp, which we want to continue. That went really well, and we want to make sure we give our families plenty of opportunity to come in and drive the discussions about what we're doing as a school. One thing we've learned throughout this redesign process, and maybe one of the problems with education in the past, is it has been too static. It finds something that works and sticks with it instead of adjusting as you start to see things aren't working. And so we know we need to be dynamic. We need to keep moving and changing with the needs of our students and our families, and parent camps offer us the opportunity to make sure that we're hearing what they have to say and what their concerns are. Did you want to... I'm going to bring up Rachel Ellers and have her share some of the things that we've done and some more information.
Again, I'm Rachel Ellers. I taught fifth grade this past year, and it was exciting to see the students' thoughts and feelings as we went through this process. Again, I was on the team, so I missed several days of school, and I would always try to come back when they would have a sub and tell them, you know, what we did and what was coming up. And I was a little afraid that they would maybe not be receptive, but they were so excited. After Christmas, I did some flexible seating along with some other teachers in our grade school. The kids loved it. They were able to stand at standing desks, you know, that we just kind of improvised ourself with PVC pipe. They sat on the floor, used yoga balls, all sorts of things that traditionally, you would maybe think that students were going to be off-task and not working, but they did a great job. They were very receptive to that. Along with the Zern that Mr. Kimmy talked about, that was a big pilot that we did with Along with the ZERN that Mr. Kimmy talked about, that was a big pilot that we did with math at the grade school level. And the students, again, they were so excited and receptive. And we always got positive feedback from them on how that went as far as they could work at their own pace. Again, it's, as Mr. Kimmy said, it's an online math program, but it's not completely online. There are hands-on activities that you can do as well in small groups. And it just really seemed to fit the needs of the students and they, they did very well with it. From a teacher perspective, again, we're a small school, but all of the teachers were excited and on board. We're ready for the changes. We're doing some co-teaching, which has kind of energized our staff, I think. We just got done with our PBL training and we all came back with a project ready to implement right away in the fall. So again, we're just super excited and we just thank you guys for the opportunity that you've given us to, to work this out and to move education forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, much of the redesign process was very much like what I would say most teachers had wished they could do or had the capacity to do for a long time. The only hard part was actually making it work and putting in the effort to actually make those changes to benefit students. So future, one year from now, we're looking at next year, starting in the development stages with co-teaching and with flexible seating, as Rachel had mentioned. And then also, we are a rural community with lots of farms around. And we want to develop partnerships with those local farms and get our grade school kids off school campus and onto farms and integrate that into science and social studies and continue their learning outside of the school. We're in the process of developing a partnership with our local mental health organization, which is Central Kansas Mental Health, to see about providing as many of their services on campus as we possibly can. We do have students who utilize those. And because we're a bit isolated about 30 minutes from Salina, Kansas, usually if we have a student leave to go to an appointment there, they're gone for either half a day or the entire day. And we know for students to learn, they have to be in our building. So working with them to try to get as many of those services offered within the district, that's going to be in both buildings, will be a tremendous benefit. We are going to address social emotional learning through the trauma-informed training. That's part of the PD calendar that was referenced by Curtis. That's going to be starting off the year next year. And then we're going to have that built in throughout the year with our professional development. Again, ZERN for K through three, Summit for fourth through six. And we're going to start off with a goal of project-based learning, making sure those get incorporated at least once a semester. Now, if they're using Summit, that's going to happen once a unit. But if you're not using Summit, our goal is to get that to be once a semester. And again, we want to have a parent camp once a semester to make sure we're continuing to get the information that we need from our parents so we can continue to grow. Our families, our grade school families, which are mixed age groups, they will be meeting once a week. And then once a month, they will have their junior high, high school cousins come down to visit them and build those relationships through the pre-K through 12 format. And then we're also doing a lot of minor building improvements. We've changed a lot of rooms to make sure that things are lined up with the co-teaching pairs in the best way possible. We're also doing a lot of painting as well. Now, for the most part, for the junior high, high school level, we're doing very similar things to what Curtis is doing over in Bennington. I did, and a couple of staff members did sit in on a lot of their redesign meetings. And like Fred mentioned earlier, you know, we all need to be going the same direction. And so for the most part, we definitely are. Now, three years from now, it looks almost exactly the same, except now we should be at full implementation. We should have as many of the kinks worked out as, as we can. But we got to recognize that there will always be kinks and we need to continue to adjust as we move forward. We can't stand still anymore. We need to keep moving forward. And that is all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Very impressive. We really appreciate your presentations, all of your presentations. Questions? Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you've got your school, which is a K-12, and then Bennington is a high school?
Seven-12.
Seven-12. So is there another elementary?
An elementary.
Okay, okay. So is there a plan to bring that other elementary onboard with the redesign?
Yeah, absolutely. We tried to approach that the whole time as a district that we were all going to be making this shift. Because, you know, Mr. Gantenbein, who's the principal there, he's going to be feeding students into his system. And we need to make sure those students are prepared to survive within that system. So as a district, we've been focused on redesigning our whole system and not just the two schools that were identified.
That was a function of our application this last fall. Mr. Gantenbein and his staff also have a leadership team. They've done a lot of things in parallel. He affectionately refers to himself as a Merkemanite school. So, I mean, that was, we would not allow them to be left out of the process. And that's not been a, that's been a difficult thing because we've had probably most of our pushback from a staff perspective probably there because they didn't get all the bells and whistles, you know, a little bit.
So from either school, if one of the teachers could maybe talk a little bit, what did you do to help bring the other teachers along as you guys were doing your planning? So if somebody could speak to that. Yeah, well, yeah, it's streaming live, so, yes, please.
Okay, well.
The world's listening to you.
Right. That's what I've always wanted.
No pressure.
So as a redesign team, one of the big things that we did was to approach things in a positive way and that if anybody had any questions, that we'd be open to answering them and trying to reassure people that, you know, what we have done has worked in some ways and, but in a lot of ways it hasn't. So we need to try to adapt to our students today and tomorrow and on into the future. So for the most part, we had, at least in my area, we had a lot of good support. My particular part of the development team was social and emotional developmental skills. And my team was really great on that. And we just tried to push positivity and just bringing everybody along. So luckily, we had, I didn't have too many issues, so.
Well, and from our perspective as well, it was interesting when they had done their parent surveys and when we did our parent surveys, we had a lot of the same feedback. So it was very easy to mesh together, trying just to, to work together with the other school and bring them along. Some ways, they worked quicker on some areas than we did. And so we kind of followed their suit. And then in other areas, our side was a little more aggressive. And so we just kind of put those together. We have, a lot of our professional development time is spent with both buildings together. So we have collaboration time within our grade levels and across the district. So most of that time this year was spent with redesign.
I'd want to add in too, we did try to get staff heavily involved, not only in taking the surveys, but when we defined the areas in which we needed to grow, we developed research teams. And those research teams were made up of teachers. And those were the ones who went through the process of trying to figure out, okay, how can we best approach personalized learning or how can we best approach project-based learning? So they really drove a lot of the directions that we went by being part of those research teams.
Are you ready, Deana?
Yes, sir. I am. Well, again, another smaller school district. And I'm really proud of the smaller school districts and how they've worked together to accomplish the type of things that need to happen for students. And so I thank you very much for all of your hard work. And I look forward to all the great things that are going to be happening very soon in, in Twin Valley and Stockton. So as well as across the state. With that, I move to accept the redesigned plans of Twin Valley USD 240 for Tuscat Grade School and Bennington Junior/Senior High as presented for the Mercury 7 Project and to be implemented by the 2018-19 school year.
Here's our second to the motion. Jim, Magnes seconds the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Eight, all opposed? Eight, zero. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll be taking pictures. We have certificates and banners to give to you. And we will take each building separately, starting with Bennington. Be right here.
In this process, in, I think, as you'll see today, have really creatively come up with ways in which our students are going to benefit. To be honest, as we started this process, I kind of wondered, knowing this, this was going to be a slog. This was going to be a tough, tough task to take on. By the time we got to this point in time, whether the enthusiasm in which they entered the process would be the same as we got to this point. And I could say that that was an unfound worry because as they've continued to put the hours in and work, the excitement that has developed and continued throughout the year, I think, has actually grown. And more importantly, not just within these two schools, but we've had the opportunity to have them present at our leadership conference a couple of weeks ago to all of our building leadership teams. And the buzz across the district about what they heard and excitement is definitely going to be contagious. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to them and just, again, thank you for this opportunity today.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Tom Hankin. I'm the principal at Westview Elementary. We're a small community of 240 students, 29 teachers. We're 77% free reduced lunch and 50% ELL. And this staff, I'm going to turn it over to my staff and let them run through the presentation a second. But they've worked incredibly hard this year getting this set up and setting Westview up for success and the students up for success in the future. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
I'm Brandy McAlis and I'm an instructional resource teacher in the district, but a former kindergarten teacher from Westview. So the school is near and dear to my heart. And it's just been an amazing opportunity to get to just watch the teachers in this building really rise with the leadership challenges we've brought to them this year. So when we think about Westview, we have a mission statement that is preparing a diverse community for lifelong success. And we looked at a vision statement that we wanted to update for this redesign process. And we just centered it around three words: inspire, cultivate, and create. And those are our dreams and goals, not just for the students, but the teachers, the community, the parents. We want everyone to just kind of really wrap their minds around what, what is possible. So when we started this process, it was, it was a daunting process to think, how do we change schools? We've done school. I mean, we know what to do. We do school like this. So to get the freedom to think outside the box, it took a second for teachers to kind of wrap their minds around, what do you even mean? Like, what are, what are we talking about? What's the limit? When are you going to tell me no? And so it was really exciting to gather data from all of our stakeholders. We questioned students and parents and teachers and just asked them things like, you know, what would school look like if it could be anything you want? For students, we had to say, what do you not like about school? Because in their little minds, they just love our little school. So it was really funny to hear what, you know, kindergarten kids do not like about school. So that was really fun to take all that data. And then we were able to take that data and really collapse it into four main areas. And I'm going to let Brianna talk about that.
So after surveying not only our students, but...
Stop. Tell us who you are.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I am Brianna Salzar. I teach ESL at Westview, so K through five, ELL. So after we surveyed our students, our staff, we also surveyed our parents, we came up with these four pillars of personalized learning, project-based learning, social emotional learning, and community. And these pillars were not devised easily. We had so many things that we wanted to do with school that we put it up in our school. And we had all these different charts of this information that we wanted to fit into what we wanted to provide for students. And so with our groups, we, I'm going to go back real quick. With our groups, we devised these four pillars and we offered it to staff. And we said, okay, what, how do you want to be involved with us? And we devised these research and development committees. And every certified staff member in our school joined one of these committees. They all dug in, researched, and came up with some major components of each of these. And that is what we chose to implement for each of these. With the first one, personalized learning, we wanted to focus on voice and choice, but not only for students, but for staff. We wanted to increase movement throughout their day, have small groups, learner profiles and goal setting. So to do that, we created a den space. And we have a large, we took two classrooms and we have a large space where all of our students combined. We chose to implement this as a pilot with our fourth and fifth grade students. And so we combine our fourth and fifth grade classes as well as their specialized ELL teacher and a dedicated resource teacher. And so those six teachers all worked with this group of fourth and fifth graders to start piloting this personalized learning. As we go forth, we will have a combined grade level of K1, 2, 3, and 4, 5 next year. We will have those personalized reading and math groups so that not only are we meeting the needs of the struggling learners, but we are providing that enrichment for our higher-level learners. We'll continue to have increased student movement with flexible seating when our den spaces. And as we roll this out, our 4, 5 teams, since they've already been piloting this, will be digging into teacher learner profiles and student learner profiles. And those will look like these platforms where students will have their driving questions, their learning standard goals, and their social emotional goals. And then each group next year will have that dedicated sped and ELL teacher. And they will have their personalized groups within their den space. So all those students will be combined throughout the day, moving around. We will, we started with project-based learning in our pilot this year. We asked that every grade level just try it in our pilot. We had a little bit of training at the beginning of the year from one of our other schools that had some training from the Buck Institute. We had a group also go to the Wichita Buck Institute training here just a couple of weeks ago. And so as we move forth in our redesign, we will be having every grade level group continue with project-based learning. We will also have a learner showcase. We had one this last spring where everyone just tried it. And then we had our community come in and we included those business communities. As we go forth, we'll continue to reach out to our business communities to integrate that with our project-based learning. And something that we really want to try this in our redesign is to integrate those specials teachers. We feel like the arts are really important and we want those to be integrated within our PBL. So they'll have their normal classes, but then they will also be pushing into our den time to help support our PBL goals.
All right. The next area we're going to look at is social emotional learning. And I think we're probably the only school that has that as a concern, right? Over the last three to five years, I know it's been just a huge need that we've seen in our school. And so we know there are things that we need to put in place. We know that we need to focus on the skills that you see listed up on the screen. And so that's just been a really big focus for us. So we have a lot of great ideas of things we'd like to implement. A few things that I think are just so exciting to see is that the school, all K5 from January to May, was piloting like a family breakfast. So there were mixed groups of kids, K through 5, that were assigned a teacher. So there was maybe eight or nine kids sitting down, eating family-style breakfast around a table. And that was just a great opportunity for those students to really make that connection, to find that person that was maybe not their classroom teacher that they knew every day would be checking in with them, asking them, hey, how was soccer practice last night? What are you going to do on your spelling test today? Just that, you know, they got that good role models that some of our students don't have with their families at home. And for the next school year, we're also going to have those families check in again at the end of the day. So you had breakfast in the morning. At the end of the day, you're packing up in the last five minutes and they're, hey, how'd that spelling test go? And, oh, you know, you lost a tooth. That's exciting. Just ways to celebrate and really make connections with our students. So I think that's something that we will just continue to watch roll out next year. We also offered students more time for lunch. So they now have an hour to have lunch and they go out to recess. I know for the fourth and fifth grade teams, the students were like, we don't know what to do. We eat in seven minutes and then we're done. So it's taken some training and practice to getting them to slow down, to eat, have some conversation. And again, I think that's just another great time to check in, let those students have a little bit of downtime, and then move them back into that academic. We are going to add additional full-time counselors. So we will have two full-time counselors in a building of only 220 students. That's pretty amazing. We are so thankful to our district for their support. But we're really excited that we'll be able to offer some individual counseling for students, do some small play groups with kids, and then have just increased counselor opportunities. Students will attend it as a special once a week. And then I know, we just have, we have so many ideas. We use Second Step as our current curriculum and we have just started using Panorama in our school district. So we're excited to kind of blend those two. We know there's a wealth of resources for teachers because one of the things is if we have students with social emotional needs, the teachers also have to know how to meet those needs. So we have to do some PD with our staff and kind of give them the tools and resources to help as they are working with new challenges. And then we're also looking at some community assemblies that once a week, we will have, imagine this, 220 kids eating breakfast in one room altogether. So they're going to start their morning in the gym and they'll eat breakfast. They'll have a community assembly, probably with a social emotional topic or skill that they'll work on before they dismiss for their class for the day. Another area that was a big one for us was community. And as a former kindergarten... And as a former kindergarten teacher, this one's near and dear to my heart because we know that we have just such a huge gap. The first day kids walk into kindergarten, there's just a huge gap of skills that are missing. Some kids come in just ready for first grade and some come in and this is their first opportunity in a formalized school setting. So we are really looking at ways that we can work within our community. We have wonderful families and they're so wonderful. They drop their students off and say, teach them. We totally trust you. And we love that about them. But we know that they are also some great leaders. And so we are really excited to bring in our parent community and see how we can get them on board to do this with us. We love that they trust us, but we know that hand in hand, we can be an even stronger team. So we will look at continuing to make connections with our local community. Not only the students that attend, but we're right in downtown Olathe. We have so many business partners that we could reach out with, especially as we're looking at things like project-based learning, to bring in those experts and let students kind of see what their potential, what their future could look like. They have all these opportunities available to them. Home visits is something we're really passionate about and really excited about. We are such a small school tucked in a neighborhood, you wouldn't even know we are there. So we know that we can easily just walk out into the neighborhood and, you know, walk into our students' home and start to build that relationship with parents. I know next year, we're starting ASQ screeners with kindergarten. And that's just another way to say, you know, we need your expertise as parents. You know, you are your child's first teacher. How can we support you? And how can we together move your child forward to have a very successful elementary future? So we have just many, many ideas for that. We do have a pre-K opportunity in our school. It doesn't have a lot of Westview students who are attending it. So that's kind of in our three-to-five-year plan. We'd like to move into getting an additional pre-K that is just for Westview students and those at-risk kids. Right now, it's currently an early childhood special ed preschool. And so we have some peer models, but then those students leave Westview and go back to their home schools. So we're just going to, those are just things that are in the works as we move forward to build this community partnership.
So when we began this process, we wanted to see what other schools were doing. So we were given the opportunity by our district to go and look at some other schools across the country. In DC, but also in our own background in Trinity Mission and in Liberty. We went and looked at all these different things and said, okay, now that we've kind of seen what other schools are dreaming about with their ideas, we came back to Westview and that's where we had made those research and design groups. And we went forward with what was going to work best for Westview and Westview students. Throughout this entire redesign process, this has been extremely empowering to our teachers. Our teachers have been the ones that have been digging in, researching, and doing what's best for their kids. They could look at their students and say, where our kids need those families. Our students need more time to eat for lunch because they don't know how to have that break. They just go, go, go. And so throughout this whole process, our teachers have been given this empowerment to dream big and to look at their standards and say, how are we going to integrate the standards for not only ELA and math, but also ESL and our special education? How are we going to meet all of those students' needs? And so there's going to be a lot more co-teaching involved, a lot more collaboration. And we looked at our space and said that when we have those dens, we're not going to have teacher desks in there. We want students to have that whole space to move around and learn. And so we're going to have teacher offices where we'll have six teachers in one room where they can constantly be collaborating and discussing the needs of their students. And then that classroom den space is where students can really take that and develop it to meet their needs and what they're working on. As we move forward, we had a Westview teacher share that building this from the ground up instead of top-down, we realized this was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity from the beginning that we can make an impact on education right now. They get to make those choices. And I just feel like that's so empowering. Our whole school is excited about where we're going and what we're going to do for students. We love our students so much and we just feel like this opportunity is an amazing time to dream big and do what's best for kids.
Okay, with that, we're really excited as we move forward. And we invite all of you guys to follow our journey on Twitter and take part in the things we're building at Westview. And open it up for any questions?
We will wait for questions.
Okay.
Next up, Santa Fe Trail Middle School. Middle School.
My name is Jay Jay Lieble and I'm the proud principal, Santa Fe Trail Middle School. And just, I have very little to do here today as far as this presentation goes. I'm going to turn it over to the experts because they're the ones that are really making this happen. But we have members of our redesign team here. We have some district folks as well here today. I think it's fitting, we just celebrated our 50th anniversary at Santa Fe Trail this year. And I think it's kind of fitting that we're starting our next 50 years with the journey of school redesign. So thank you for having us today.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear us today and for your continued encouragement and support of the Mercury School program and projects. My name is Deb Hill and I'm the vocal music teacher at Santa Fe Trail and one of the nine members of our redesign team. The demographics at Santa Fe Trail, 735 students, 115 staff members. Half of our population is economically disadvantaged and 28% of them are English language learners.
All right. And I am Josh Stock. I'm a sixth-grade language arts teacher. Thanks again for having us here. Huge shout out to Jay for helping us out and walking us through this process. When we started this process, we spent a lot of time focusing on our mission statement, which was tough for me because I wanted to get going. I mean, I'm the gas pedal guy, the guy who wants to move, 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 move. But I'm really glad we did because we ended up with this mission statement of empowering all learners to explore. And each word, I mean, we spent a lot of time breaking down each word. We wanted to empower students with the tools they need to succeed in that post-secondary world, also succeeding through, you know, middle school and high school. So things like self-advocacy, grit, resilience, empathy. We want to give them those tools that are going to prepare them for that. And the most important thing for me is all means all. We want to make sure that every student gets some sort of enriched activity engagement throughout their school day. A lot of times when you're focusing on students, you want to focus on those students who aren't quite at grade level, get them boosted up. But every student deserves that time and energy to make sure that they have a worthwhile experience while they're there and they're able to grow. So that's gifted students, ELL students, kids who come from trauma backgrounds, CBR. Every student deserves that. And then we also talked about, when we're talking about learners, we're not just talking about our students, but we're also talking about the teachers. And we are constantly trying to find ways to learn and grow as educators along with our students. And then finally exploring, we want to give students the opportunities for their voices to be heard, give them chances to choose things and the freedom to try new things and, you know, fail epically. If that's what happens, that's great. It's a learning opportunity to move on to the next thing. So that's really our mission statement. And everything we've done since then has gone back to that focus and it's really given us a great starting point for everything that's going to come.
My name is Pinky McMillan. I'm the science teacher over at SFT for seventh grade. And as Josh said, that this, like you said, we spent a lot, like I felt like we spent like six months on it. I know we only did like three, but it was like six to me. And what I loved about this is this is our foundation. We come back to this every single time when we were talking about our goals and we were going to be moving forward with this. So from there, to turn this into action, we went ahead and did our three pillars. Our first one being social-emotional learning, our second being academic, and our third being the civic mindedness. And with those, we, and I know that Westview did a wonderful job talking about, you know, getting the community involved, getting input from students, getting inputs from parents, getting input from staff. We did the, you know, we're doing very similar things along this line. So even though we had our nine core for redesign, we were still going back out to everyone else saying, okay, now let's start these other subcommittees. So like one of our first subcommittees for social-emotional came together. They said, hey, we want to empower students and staff to better understand who they are, their importance, and their impact on others. And then once again, going back to those words of grit, resilience, sympathy, you know, we're going back to, once again, our foundation for this. Our second group that got together was our academic. And they said, hey, we want to create opportunities for continual student growth through reflection of data. And then last but not least, our civic-minded engagement pillar. They wanted, hey, think globally, but act locally, you know, know what's out there and what can we do in our community. So I'm going to go ahead and start off with our social-emotional learning pillar. Due to our, our Jay had shown us our 4DX model of doing the lag and lead measures. And so we wanted to set our goals and our milestones with the SEL pillars being that we want to decrease disciplinary referrals and increase positive referrals. We know these kids are not going to learn unless this is happening for sure. Second, we wanted to decrease chronic absence. And last but not least, we want to increase our students' ability to emotionally regulate. So one of the things that we piloted is something very similar with view. We actually went ahead and did a cyclone startup and wrap-up. And so what that consisted of is that the kids would come to class and they immediately go to their startup group, their homeroom, so what we currently call. Once a week, we always did cyclone circles. So those, you know, for example, in my classroom, we were getting in our circle, we're asking questions, we're meeting up, we're setting goals. We were going ahead and triaging, we're doing some mentoringship while we're there. The kids bring in their breakfast as well and they have, we also have a program called Second Chance Breakfast for those who even come later. But then what's nice is it's just a nice start to the start of the day. You know, I don't know about you guys, but when I wake up and like especially my husband, he needs a cup of coffee before he can do anything, right? So these kids, it's like this is their cup of coffee. They need just not something to say, okay, let's get started with math right now. So, and what was nice about this is that we have so many tardies, like ridiculous amount of tardies to first hour. And if you're a math teacher and you start 15 minutes later, another kid walks in, well, okay, now, well, here's my class and let me get you started here and now you're working with this. With this, we were kind of hoping that we were decreasing this first-hour tardies and getting the students where they need everyone on the same page right off the bat. And then at the very end of the hour, at the end of the day, we had a five-minute wrap-up and we're talking about those goals that we said, hey, I know you had this goal for this test this day. Hey, I know you wanted to do this, you know, how did that go? And just kind of like a little reflection piece with the students as well. So the data that we got back from that, we went and piloted back in January. And so we went and took a survey with all the students and the staff. And we said, hey, you know, how did this go for you students? And they said, hey, 90% reported that either it was neutral or it was a positive start to their day. 90%. I was like, great. So first-hour tardies decreased by 83%. And I was like, yes. And then last but not least, which I think is very important, is that 90% of our teachers participated in the pilot. They said that they were able to mentor a different student daily. And as a parent, like I have two kids of my own, I was like, that's amazing. Like to know that my kid is going to school and there's someone there to advocate for them, I think is, that is so amazing. It's that their relationship piece, you know. When I remember my first start teaching, I used to say, kids don't know how much, care how much you know until they know how much you care. And I think this definitely proves that. So going back to this pilot, we saw that was successful. We are going to continue this program, you know, for start of August next year. We also are wanting to start a breakfast program with our Washington staff because we know that with our chronic absences, our students, I'm going to go back just a second just so you can see our goals here real quick. We know with the chronic absences due to our population, we have brothers and sisters at the elementary next door who are having to, you know, come in late because they're bringing their kids late. And their, the elementary starts a later time than secondary does. So we thought, well, what if we had a breakfast program with Washington? So this is definitely one of those goals that we're going to try a partnership with this elementary next to us and seeing if we could help with that chronic absences and late tardies passes. And then another thing that we're just doing, we've started a respect program from the years before with the building leadership team. And we're wanting to continue those secondary lessons, sorry, second step lessons, and using that panorama data to move forward. In fact, Josh is going to talk about our academic pillar here in a second and he'll actually talk about using that panorama data to actually help us with the academics.
All right. So just to recap, the academic pillar, to be honest, was probably the most challenging of the three pillars. Just because academics is such a personal thing for a teacher, especially at the secondary level. A lot of teachers love working with students, but second to that is they love their content area so much and they're so passionate about it. And what I love about our redesign team is we have such a great blend of core teachers, elective teachers. Every single subject area has feedback in this. And so what do we focus on? And so, and it's also balancing their traditional, what's being assessed, what's being tested, what's most important there versus these new soft skills that post-secondary students need. Trying to find that balance was tough. So we came with 100% of our students should be showing growth on some sort of data measure. And we're going to try to triangulate with map testing, state assessment testing, as many different data points as we can to try to see where they're showing the most growth. We have a district-wide goal of 50% reduction in level-one assessment scores. But most importantly, in order for any of that to happen, we want to increase students' self-efficacy because if they don't believe that their actions have an impact on their learning, they're not going to try. I mean, students need to believe that what they're doing is really going to improve them as a student and improve them for life after school. And so to measure that, we're going to use the panorama data that Westview mentioned. There is a self-assessment that students do at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year. And we're going to hope that they show growth on their reflection of themselves as a student and the way they can impact their own learning. And it also goes back to that, those tools that we want to give them. We want to give them the tools necessary that they believe that they can come to a challenge and figure out how to solve it without having a teacher having to walk them through that. One of the things we did was more systemic as far as our schedule. We changed our schedule to add two block days. That allows more time for project-based learning activities, extensive science labs. Things like that can be done on those block days. It gives them a lot more time to really dive into the content. And then we have three days, Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, that are a traditional seven-hour school day. But one other thing we added into that is four days a week, students are getting some sort of intervention. But again, that goes back to all means all. And so we're trying to make sure that during those intervention times, we have opportunities for students who are struggling to get the support they need in a small group setting. But we're also trying to get enrichment activities for those scholars who are just soaring above the curriculum. So on Monday, Tuesday, Friday, we've got, it's called ACE Win Time. Some of the students just need that time to get that work done and meet with a teacher. But other students might need extra support in one of their content areas. And we try to mix it up. So for example, when we were piloting this, I had one group where I did literature circles. At the end of the week, we recorded podcasts of what they had learned. This was a group of students who struggled with reading their novels. But when they got to do that podcast at the end, they were so excited to do that. And it was a small setting where I was able to touch base with each group. So effectively, that is really worthwhile. But I also had a group another week where we did, I called it the Innovation Lab, where I've got a lot of tech stuff. I've got these things called Makey Makey boards. I've got all kinds of things for them to explore and try something new. We also have an entire block dedicated to that on Thursdays. Again, especially on that Thursday one, there's a lot of student choice there where students could choose where they wanted to invest their time. And so this is something that I'm really excited about. The thing about academics that I really enjoyed about this redesign process is it gave us permission to try something new. It gave, made teachers, even though they had some of those freedoms, teachers really felt like after this that, well, I can try that new idea. We've got a structure here that allows for different blocks of time. And so teachers are already trying new things. In the fall, our, the sixth graders, we're going to be piloting portfolios, digital portfolios that students can start putting what they're learning and start putting learning artifacts online because we want them to have a positive digital footprint when they leave us. And the goal is next year to have sixth graders, the year after sixth and seventh, the year after sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So that when they leave us, they have this collection of growth and learning that they've done throughout their time with us. So, and that's really been our focus for that. And Deb's going to lead us into civic engagement.
All right. So the civic engagement pillar, as far as I'm concerned, has probably been the most fun and the most easy to engineer. Partly because it's a personal passion and it's just really exciting to see the kids' response to the different things that we planned. We asked the teachers to take a leap of faith and do something that we called Exploration Days, which meant stepping outside their comfort zone. We designed days that we called Exploration Days and the timeframes in them were called Orbits. And they were large time blocks where teachers could either plan something that was a passion to them of great interest, not related to their content area, reach out to the community at large and have them come in and work with our students and teach them something new and different, or dive really deeply into their own content area. Those were very successful and I'll get to the data to that in just a minute. We're going to increase the active participation from students in Exploration Days next year. We're also going to implement the RSVP program. That's raising student voice and participation and earn, they want to earn the Council of Excellence Award. And when I say they, I mean our students. Our newly formed student leadership team is meeting tomorrow with a couple of the teachers and with our principals to start talking more about those goals. And then we want to implement a seventh-grade job shadowing program, which will be PBL-based. So Exploration Days, as I've already said, means exploring the unknown, diving deeper, getting- So Exploration Days, as I've already said, means exploring the unknown, diving deeper, getting guest presenters in there, getting hands-on learning done, making community connections, and doing service projects. The job shadowing PBL is going to be based on student interest. We're going to use community connections, research-based information, and hands-on experience for those students. When we did the Exploration Days, we saw the number of orbits offered by teachers increase by 82% from the first pilot to the third pilot. This implies that the teachers were really getting a hold of this and getting excited and able to share that excitement with the students. These orbits related to soft skills, academic skills, civic engagement, job shadowing, foreign languages, physical fitness, animal health, giving back to the community, construction, personal growth, and so many other things, I couldn't even begin to list them all. And I invite each of you to come visit us for one of our Exploration Days next year and just see it firsthand. Jay was able to come see that, and it's quite a unique and different experience for our kids. So our civic engagement pilot, 80% of our students rated those Exploration Days as three or higher on a five-point scale. 68% admitted they learned something new, even if it wasn't one of their top three choices. 67% said they were able to get one of their top three choices. And that 82% increase that I already mentioned in offerings, which really opened up a world of opportunities for our learners. The job shadowing, I'm going to have Pinky finish up with here in just a minute. That was her baby. She did a pilot program with that. We had 37 seventh graders participate in that job shadowing pilot, and 92% of them successfully completed their job shadowing experience. So Pinky, I'm going to hand it off to you to share those closing letters.
Oletha does a 21st century program, and eighth graders are required to put in their essays by the December and say, hey, I want to do these programs, which they are amazing, they're awesome. But I noticed that our seventh graders had no idea what some of these programs were. They wanted to do sports med because they thought it was about sports and not medicine. So I thought, well, these kids, you know, what's out there, and so this is why we piloted the job shadowing program. And so these kids did with the IPS system, they went into career cruising, they did the research, they worked on soft skills, and they actually got to do two-hour, you know, job shadowing time. So I have a couple of letters from students that responded, you know, to these different job mentors. One of them says, thank you so much for taking time out of the busy schedule to show me what a day in the life of a water treatment chemist is really like. I had so much fun and learned many valuable lessons. I enjoyed everything you did. My time with you reinvigorated my drive to become a chemist one day. I had another student, he said, he didn't even get to shadow him because it was in a hospital, and he wants to be a neurosurgeon. And, and so obviously, he can't go with patients, and so all he could do was just interview him, that's it. And he said, you know, dear doctor, he says, I'm very thankful for this experience. There are so many questions I've always wanted to ask, but can't ask, and you can't ask a book for experiences. This was also very fun. I felt happy when I was learning. I just want to say thank you. And just like those kids, I just want to say thank you too, because once again, like our mission states, we want to empower all learners to explore, and I am a learner as well. I feel like we were, as a community, as students, as parents, and everybody here, we were empowered to explore and do what's best for kids. So thank you. Do we have any questions?
Okay, we'd really like to thank Westview Elementary and Santa Fe Trail, so middle school from Oletha. So Board, do we have questions? I'll just have you raise your hand because I don't seem to have this hand raised anything. Okay, Ann?
Thank you. Some really great work on your part. It's going to be fun to watch, and I like the, what you were talking about, project-based learning. I'm wondering, at the middle school, maybe elementary too, are you doing anything with personalized learning for the students, like working at their own pace in the classes? I know the schedule looks pretty traditional, but you can do some untraditional things within that. What are you doing with student-paced learning?
So at the elementary level, we are doing personalized learning, and that's where we're integrating our ELL and our special education dedicated teachers. And we are making, looking at our data after we have our assessments and saying, okay, these kids are in this group. And we're really grouping our students based off of our data and their needs. And so, and within our framework, we are having personalized groups in the morning. And if they're not in a personalized group, that's when they are working in their den time. And that's where they're working on their PBL, where we're having special teachers come in and integrate during that time as well. And then the afternoon, so that we can preserve that grade-level curriculum, we're having grade-level reading and math time to, so that they're still getting that grade-level time as well.
Okay, thank you.
And at the middle school level, we are looking at with that ACE Win Time, that intervention time, students are given some choices as far as where they feel like they need the most support. And so they may go to an enrichment activity. But I'm also working with the district right now on a way to provide some enrichment activities that kids can explore at their own pace through Moodle content creation. So it's still a work in progress, though.
Yep, I get that. Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, Commissioner?
So for both, what was the hardest challenge? You know, what was the hardest? When did it happen? Help others understand they're going to come after you.
I think just dreaming big. Like when we were saying the sky is the limit and what do we want school to look like? That was really hard for us to know. What could we do? What are the choices out there? And then really trying to fit it still within our framework that we have, whether it's timing of how much date time we have in a day, or all the things that we want to do, making them all fit together to meet the students' needs. But that was probably the hardest, is just what is everything out there that we could do?
I think for our building, the most challenging thing was, I want to say agreement. It sounds simple, but it really isn't. There were so many ideas, and as Josh mentioned, people feel passionately about their content area, and it requires sacrifice. If you're going to redesign, you've got to sacrifice something. And so we had some very contentious and serious discussions. But the good thing about those contentious discussions is that we all grew from them, and we learned to consent to certain things. We learned to let go of what we could let go of and hear the other people. And I think every teacher grew from that and developed new perspectives and a willingness to work together. And so that has been the biggest challenge. And in all honesty, we did have some teachers who chose to leave the building, but we knew that going in, that it wasn't going to be everybody's cup of tea. And so they chose to go pursue their careers in other buildings. And so that was, that was probably the toughest challenge for our building, unless there was something that you would...
Dina?
Well, I have a couple, couple of questions. Roadblocks that you ran up against that you think that at some point we need to change policy? Or someone, somewhere, or statute, something needs to be changed so that you can work more effectively with your students? Do you, did either of you run up against things like that? And could you identify what those are?
I, I agree. We did hit some roadblocks, but again, that just gave us time to dig in even more. One was just the physical restraints of our building. I think Westview's a 63-year-old building, and we want to, you know, create some of these flex spaces and big rooms. And you know, when you have cinder block walls, they just won't knock that down. So I think some of that has just been a creative struggle is to figure out, well, how do we still have this process work in the constraints of our, you know, old school building? I think another one is PD, professional development and collaboration time. There is just not enough hours in the day for teachers to get to collaborate together when they're going to start working in those large structures. Like when we have six teachers in a room, you need more than an hour a day to talk to each other, to plan, to talk about student needs. And we see that our staff really wants to do that, but it's just finding that balance of time. And then again, when we look at our professional development schedule, we know that as we want, you know, to do this with fidelity, we need to really have strong training in place for our teachers. And you can't throw it all at once. It needs to be baby chunks built in over the course of years, and then time to implement that. So I would say those are a few of our roadblocks.
I'd say we had a couple. One of them was just being one of the biggest school districts going through this process, being one of nine other middle schools. And only one of nine other middle schools were going through the redesign process. They're not quite there yet. That was a challenge. So figuring out how to, how, what we do may differ from what other districts were doing, that was a little bit of a challenge. And then we also have the balancing the soft skills that we know students need with six weeks of testing at the end of the school year. That timing of classroom time lost has been a, a challenge, so.
And the other question that I have has to do with the size of your district. And if you have plans to expand, is there interest to expand what you've been doing into other schools within the district? And if so, how are you planning to handle all of that?
All right, that's a great question, because we have 35 elementary schools. And we have, I know as Mr. Allison mentioned earlier, we have had the opportunity from our district to get up and present and tell other people what's going on. I know we've shared with principal groups what's happening. I know teachers are just buzzing and talking at professional development opportunities. But when we were able to stand in front of our entire district two weeks ago and just explain and share what we are doing, the message that we were sending, but also hearing very clearly from our district is, if you hear something that you think is great for students, just run with it. Take that little nugget and run. You don't have to be a redesigned school to do this. Like you can do what your students need at your school. And so I think knowing that our district is supporting that is really great as we move forward in this process.
And I think, you know, Mr. Allison could probably talk to this a little bit more, but recently in Oletha, we've started a middle school study. So it's really, it's been seven years since we reconfigured to where we went with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at the middle school, at the middle school level, before we were a junior high, seven, eight, nine. Which has been great to move to that, move those sixth graders up. But we really haven't had, we haven't gone back to look at what's working and what's not working as an entire district. So they've started that process. In fact, they have ongoing meetings now and looking at the things that we've been looking at, which is kind of fun to be in those meetings now because now we're kind of in front of that. And so we feel good about, you know, about the things when they start talking about curriculum and scheduling and activities that we've been through that process. The one thing that I would say to scale that up, though, I really, the more I go through this process, the more I believe that it really, that each school really needs to go through it, though. Because it's not a one-size-fits-all program. And what works at Santa Fe Trail may not work at, at another middle school that's in our district. And so I think there's a balance of scaling this up, but still allowing those schools to really go and dig in deep on the process. Because Deb had mentioned, we've had a lot of really, really tough conversations, and we've moved a lot of cheese, including admin. We've moved up, we've had, we've had to change. And so I really think it's important that every school have to go through the process and really talk about what's important for the kids in our building, because it's not the same. It's not the one-size-fits-all approach. And, and that's really, what's great about redesign is it has been, hey, dream, and, and, you know, do what's best for your students and your community.
Thank you. Other questions?
So this is probably for John, wherever he is in the back. And it's, and, and I'll preface it by, it's an unfair question, so if you want to punt, that's fine. But, and so you know this, one of the challenges of being a superintendent or a leader in a large district is, I don't think we want to go back to site-based management and the fragmentation of that. How do we couple, in your opinion, John, the autonomy to kind of have teacher voice within some kind of a larger structure? And I know, you know, all through Oletha and other school districts, Wichita, Kansas City, we're all wrestling with that. I think the Board would be interested in your thoughts on that.
I think that's the challenge for the larger school districts. How do you provide that autonomy, but not to the point that you, you really want to be a school district, not a district of independent entities? And part of that is just the practical nature of how do you support your schools? How do you provide the PD, the materials? So there, there are some areas where I think we, we have to be systems-focused, and then there are those areas where we need to allow that autonomy. A little bit of that, here are the foundational pieces that we expect as part of the Oletha School District. And then you have that selective release when we're doing those well, and you're showing that for your students, they're progressing, then greater latitude. But I, I think the key piece in, in what we're looking at is how do we scale this up? It isn't a one-size-fits-all, as JJ said, is how do we recreate the process that Westview and Santa Fe have gone through within our district to give those schools that are ready for these conversations? I think we had seven to nine, going back a year, schools that were interested in this process. But these were the two that had the consensus within staff and were really ready to move forward. Not every, every building was capable. So as we bring up that foundational piece, then, how do we put the process and support in place so they can have these critical conversations, look at their student data, and then make, make decisions? And then as a district, our job will be to support them in the best way possible.
Okay, John? Are you ready? Oh, Steve, your question?
Is 77% your highest free reduced lunch rate in USD 233? The 77%?
For a, a school? It's going to be pretty close. I think we were, we, you guys the highest, second highest? I think that the highest we have is 81%, if I remember correctly.
And should we draw distinctions between moving within a district? When, when parents and families want to move, they say, well, you know, I'm actually closer to this school, or I want my kids going to that particular school. I'm assigned to school A, but I really want my kids going to school B because there's a teacher they like, or for whatever reason. Should we be knocking down barriers, not only within districts, but between districts? Should that be part of our, I don't know?
There's, there's a lot of movement within the Oletha School District, particularly you get to the secondary because of the 21st century learning academies. Our district is, is very much focused on the neighborhood school, so that students are going to school with their neighbors, those types of things. The devil's in the details. To selectively allow students to move based on, well, I think I've heard this great thing about that teacher, becomes completely impractical for a school district to be able to staff. You know, the transportation issue, it becomes an equity issue. I may, as a parent, be able to transport my student across the district, but the parent right next door to me cannot. So now we've said, student A gets an advantage that student B doesn't. So it's, I think that's something we constantly wrestle with in trying to make opportunities as available as, as much as we possibly can. The expense of transportation, the ability to even find drivers for what we're providing now, if we were to, to increase by 10 or 20%, our, our transportation piece would be difficult to do. So I, I think there are ways that, that we're trying to do that. I don't know exactly where that sweet spot is at this point.
Well, I'll just share this with you. I was privileged to, one of my part-time jobs is Uber driver, and I was driving four young men who attend Sean Mission East. So they're from a fairly hoity-toity neighborhood. In fact, they were hoity-toity. They were each kind of bragging about their vacation homes in Key West. But I broached the subject with them, like, would you be okay with kids coming to your school from, say, Wyandotte County? And their response was, well, yeah, if they could arrange the transportation. And I thought that was a good idea.
Like I said, devil's in the details. If they're coming from someplace else, I think we, we would have to work out, and it's valid, because I've heard this from local taxpayers. I'm paying taxes for the construction of that building. How do you justify, you know, when somebody else isn't? But yeah, I think the, the greater opportunities, I think school districts are working to break down those barriers. If you look at OATC on a space-available basis, we're providing opportunities for students from the area school districts to participate. Once our students are placed, if we have extra slots, we're, we're making that available. And I know that school districts are trying to be more collaborative, break down the, the isolation and a little bit of that competitive nature to be able to provide those opportunities. So I think it's, we've started, and it, it'll continue to grow in those conversations.
Okay, Mr. Bacon?
Thank you. Thanks for taking on this challenge. I mean, we've had several presentations now, and I sense confidence in this group that you're ready for launch, so I, I sensed that today. Oletha, I can tell you, by experience, has always been a district that provides great opportunities for students to be their best and do their best. opportunities for students to be their best and do their best. The mayor always says that the school district in Olathe is our best economic development tool that we have. So, with that, I move to accept the redesigned plans of Olathe USD 233 for Westview Elementary and Santa Fe Trail Middle School as presented for the Mercury Seven Project and to be, to be implemented by the 2018, 2019 school year.
Okay. Do you have a second? Mr. McNeese? Any additional comments? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Thank you. Pass, 7-0. Very exciting. We are going to take just a little bit of time to celebrate with some certificates and a banner and some picture ops. If the Board, we're going to stay around for just a few minutes, because the Commissioner would like to follow up with us, with Jay and Tammy also. Anybody else is welcome to stay also. But we're going to do a couple pictures, and then the Board will reconvene for a few moments after that.
Thank you.
Board, back to the table, please. Once again, we'd really like to thank Olathe for coming and presenting to us today. And actually, we'd like to thank all seven of our Mercury schools. What a, what a day and a half we've had. We've had some fabulous presentations and amazing job that these folks have done. And thanks to Tammy and Jay for their leadership. Appreciate that. We really do want to take a few minutes to debrief. We know the Board's had a long couple days, but we're going to take just a few minutes here. I think Commissioner would like to say a few things and get a little bit of feedback.
Well, and I know that we'll have some opportunities. Our plan for those Gemini schools that are going to launch, we'll see those in, in the fall as they launch. And most of those are going to launch next year, but there are a few that are going to launch this year. But I didn't know if you had some questions or reflections that you just wanted to, you know, say? I asked Jay and Tammy just to stay for a few minutes, just, you know, to hear, you know, we're not going to go in detail of next steps. We'll be presenting that to you, you know, more of a long-range plan for how we implement and roll out other districts. But your reflections, these are your schools and the people that you serve, and I know Jay and Tammy would welcome your thoughts, so.
Okay. Comments?
Yes, Jay and Tammy, I would just like to thank you for the outstanding work you've been doing, because what we've seen in the last couple of days is, not the culmination, but is the beginning of a vision that we've had for a long time, as you know, Jay, here. And it was, it's, it's been truly inspiring. And the thing that struck me that I really didn't expect was the change that this change is making in the staff, people that are implementing it. I mean, it's a life-changing kind of thing, because it's a different paradigm for life, for, for living and learning and teaching. So, while it's teacher-driven, it's, it's student-focused, and I think that is really a key. And you've done a really good job of, of making that clear in, in your assistance to, to these districts. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? John?
Well, I think it's, some of the goals were very specific, some were kind of vague. So, measuring the goals and so that we can see progress, I think that's going to be a challenge going forward. Some look, I mean, some seem like they're on top of it, but others, I wasn't sure what their expectations.
Yeah, I would agree. And, you know, moving forward in August, that's going to be, as, as they really get really concrete about, about what they're implementing and how they're implementing it, that's our next steps, is some of those schools do need to shore up those goals so that they're measurable and so that they can, can figure out a cadence of touch points and pivot points so that they're keeping track of that data. So, yes, I would, I would very much agree.
And I just want to add to that, that, you know, we, we know that those kinds of conversations are not conversations that Tammy and I are experts in. And so, we brought Dr. Kelly Spurgeon along with us on our, on a round of, our last round of visits with the Mercurys to talk them through, okay, you're looking at measuring social-emotional growth. I mean, that was a common goal across all of our schools, which is really, really reinforcing what we're trying to get done in Kansas. And, and having those conversations about, how do you measure that? How do you have, you know, get down to the brass tacks on that so that we can say at the end of the day, this was successful, this was not? Our schools really want that. I mean, if you, if you don't know what winning looks like, you don't invest very much.
Right.
And so, when they, when they figure out how to measure those things, and having our staff at the, at the State Department be able to help them through that, it's really something we're excited about.
Steve?
Thank you. I was struck by, I think it was Twin Valley, they had their, they had one slide with three bullet points at the bottom. That were the traditional three Rs, read, write, and arithmetic. But the discussion around that was how it is a totally new approach that involves the community and, and how we're going to measure things differently. And it was, it was powerful. And every time I hear about the community, parents, family, that, that takes us where we need to go, in my view, and where the, the folks who've been on this board a lot longer than I have wanted to go for a long time. So, tremendous work to put us in the right direction. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Any else? Dina?
Well, I thought that I'd like to reiterate some of what Ken said in particular, the changes that it made in some teachers' attitudes and their life is incredible, and it's touching, frankly. And the other things, the, the more concrete, or maybe not so concrete thing, that I think first Kathy mentioned, was finding out where the roadblocks are. And we really only asked that of a couple or three different school districts. But it would seem that would be something that we really do need to know, and so we can facilitate and hopefully be a part of, of effectively helping them with the change that they want to make that's good for kids. We don't want to be the roadblock, that's for sure. And so, I think that's one of the things we definitely need to know. I was also struck by some of the school districts kind of skipped middle school and went from an elementary school to a high school. And it seems to me that, at some point, it's going to create an issue for those kids in middle school who've been used to some really different things happening, and then, all of a sudden, in high school, they're back into almost the dark ages, from their point of view, probably. So, I guess I'm wondering how, how we bridge those gaps that are there. I know some of them plan on moving from one to the other, but if it's kind of a roadblock, then how do we get from Plan A to Plan B in, when we've been in A and C?
Yeah, yeah. You know, you bring up a good point. When we asked for those applications for the Mercury project, we said that they, they needed to agree to redesign one elementary and one secondary, and we did not designate whether that needed to be a middle school or a high school. So, those were, at the outset, those were local decisions. But moving forward with Gemini 2, we asked, we told districts that they could redesign as many schools as they wanted to. And so, moving forward, districts are seeing that, yeah, we don't want an elementary school and a high school without that middle school bridge. And so, moving forward, I think we're going to be able to shore that up better, because, yeah, that makes complete sense.
Thank you. Steve?
Were you able to observe the interplay with the local boards, or go to their meetings, or their votes, or have much interaction? Could you describe the dynamics that we saw on a variety of our local boards?
Yeah. So, early on at Twin Valley, we were invited into a, it wasn't, wasn't a formal board meeting, it was just a informal board meeting there in the boardroom. And so, Fred Van Rankin brought us in, and we were able to have a conversation with their board, and they were very, they were on fire. I mean, they were asking questions that we weren't prepared for, which happens all the time. But it was, it was something that was really kind of, early on, we knew there was a lot of support there at Twin Valley, and they were just really curious about things. And so, what was neat was, when we would go on, like, we went to Lawrence to check out how they do personalized blended learning, and Twin Valley came, and they brought several board members. So, that was a really nice thing of seeing schools, instead of just focusing on, okay, our teachers need training on this, well, our, some of our community members, some of our board members need to go and be part of those learning experiences to, to engage them in the process. And then, we also presented to Coffeyville's Board of Education, not about a month ago. So, yeah, we've been engaged with the boards.
Okay. Just a couple more things to finish up. First of all, Board, I think we all need to be proud, because this has been a lot of work that we've been involved with for a long time, thanks to the leadership of Randy and work of you guys. We really appreciate that, so folks should feel real good about. It's been, been a long couple days, but it's been very good. The thing that Randy has shared with me is, this next semester, in the fall, we're going to be taking some road trips and seeing some of these schools and seeing what they're doing. So, that'll be a great opportunity for us. And I think, as you guys mentioned, the implementation year is going to be big for these Mercury schools. So, it's not like their support has gone away, because it'll have to continue. Then you have to get into sustainability. So, we've got a lot of work yet to do. So, Board, thank you for your hard work on this. Thank you for your support, and you really had some good questions today, and it was a great presentation. So, we really appreciate all of the good, hard work. And the meeting for June is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your support.